Council could gather up. In session, let's go to roll call.
Ms. Romero?
Here.
Mr. Cunningham?
Here.
Mr. Durham?
Here.
Mrs. Scott?
Here.
Mr. Fimbres?
Here.
Mr. Kazachik?
Mayor Rothschild?
Here. Item two?
Invocation and Pledge of Allegiance.
The invocation will be given by Reverend Janice Farmer from Center for Spiritual Living. After the invocation, I ask you remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
So if everyone would please just take a breath with me for a moment. Breathing in with one breath. Feeling the unity of this space. The harmony and the peace and the joy and the love that runs through everyone's veins. Celebrating this thing called life and this opportunity to come together, to be clear and to understand and to know. So I celebrate everything about this evening, this meeting, these conversations, and note them as good and very good. I relax into that, I accept it, I allow it, I receive it. Aho, amen, and so it is.
No green light for anyone who's coming up tonight. Jacob Bernal, if you're here. If you could come up. I'm going to proclaim September 22nd through the 28th to be American Indian Awareness Days. Jacob has been with the Tribal Center here for a number of years now, and so I have a proclamation I'd like to read and then have him accept. Whereas American Indians have inhabited this region for thousands of years, and whereas American Indians contribute to this community's cultural and economic well-being and continue to improve our community by involving themselves in all aspects of public and community service, and American Indians actively provide recommendations and input into the decision-making process of our educational system and participate in ceremonies relating to the history of Tucson, whereas American Indians promote activities that enhance the Tucson economy and call for an even deeper involvement in education, local, state, and federal government in the development of our community, now therefore I, Jonathan Rothschild, Mayor of the City of Tucson, do hereby proclaim September 22nd through September 28th, 2019, to be American Indian Awareness Days in this community and encourage all of our residents to appreciate and support the efforts of American Indians in Tucson. With that, Jacob, I proudly give you this.
Thank you. Good evening. On behalf of the Tucson Indian Center, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Mayor and Council for the proclamation. It is truly meaningful to us that you celebrate and acknowledge the rich contributions American Indians have made to this area for centuries. This includes the cultural and economic and social contributions that we firmly believe have made this area that we call Tucson a better place to live, to work, and retire. It has strengthened the resolve of all inhabitants in this area, and for that, we are truly grateful and we appreciate the efforts of this body here today. So thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Once a year at this time, we have our Tucson Parks Commission, who are a group of volunteers who watch and oversee our parks, recognize folks that have done great contributions to the parks over the course of the year, and so I'm pleased to recognize the recipients of the 2019 Tucson Parks and Recreation Commission Annual Award with these plaques that they're about to receive. Assisting with the presentation are Brent Dennis, I know I saw Brent, come on up, who is our director, our excellent Director of Parks and Recreation, and staff and members of the Tucson Parks and Recreation Commission, so if any members of the Commission could also come up. All right, so the first person we want to give our gratitude to in a Commissioner Award is to Andy Rodriguez Garcia. Is Andy here? There she is. So your certificate and plaque reads, "In appreciation for your creativity and dedication to multiple center events, programs, and committees, we as a city, thank you for taking pride in your job, performing at a high level, and your ever willing, your ever-present willingness to help," which is a big deal. Thank you very much. The second gratitude goes to another Parks and Recreation employee, Jeremy Hare. All right, Jeremy. Thanks, Jeremy, thanks. I gotta read it, if I take it, I can't read it. "In appreciation for your dedication to Tucson Parks and Recreation Department through exemplary efforts, creativity, hard work, and pride in all your projects, thank you for your valuable contributions and outstanding service." There you go. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, the next one, this is the last one to employ, and by the way, I mean, we're recognizing these three employees tonight, and clearly they've done incredible service, but I can tell you, in our Parks Department, we have all sorts of people who work hard every day, and not all these jobs are glamorous, very few of them are glamorous. I mean, some of them are cleaning up the parks and cleaning the bathrooms and making sure the parks are as safe as we can make them, and then we have the people who put on the programming and work with the seniors and work with the youth and work with everybody, so the whole department is to be commended, but the last person of employees is Miguel Garcia. Miguel? So this is "In appreciation for excellent service to the community, for your dedication to the Ori Recreation Center," which is a really good place. "Thank you for your continued mentorship of staff and for creating a sense of trust among staff, community members, and program participants." Congratulations. And the last one is to a Parks and Recreation volunteer. It's Lucy Porter, is Lucy here? There she is. So this is "In recognition of the dedication and volunteer contributions to multiple community improvements, and thank you for your countless efforts and hours in support of reopening the Ormsby Neighborhood Center," and that was an accomplishment, and I think there's a picture of Ormsby there for you, so. There you go. Okay, thank you.
And we have one more.
You do?
And we do. This award is for Mayor Rothschild. On behalf of the Tucson Parks and Recreation Commission, dear Honorable Mayor of Tucson, Arizona, in appreciation of all the accomplishments achieved as a result of your leadership at the city, and gratitude for the significant quality of life improvements in which have benefited Tucson residents, thank you for your advocacy, active participation, and leadership of many community projects which support a healthy Tucson. Thank you so much.
So being elected, I have to say something. So I actually, I started my service with the City of Tucson as a volunteer on the Parks Commission, so if you want to be mayor, join the Parks Commission, or if you don't want to be, don't join it, but, and it kind of culminated with the help of this entire council by really making an effort. For years and years, our parks, because of the recession, didn't get the love they needed because we had to take all that money and put it to police and fire and roads and transit and things, and parks almost became something that was not mandatory, even though it's in our charter, and working with this entire council, we were able to pass the bond resolution and getting the trust of the community, which is going to inject, and it's already started, to $225 million worth of projects, which are all listed, and you can see them, for the next nine years, and really bring our park system up to where it should be, and a lot of that is because of the dedication of all these people too, so thank you. This is a wonderful award, but it's really all the work you guys did, so thank you, appreciate it. Okay, item 2D.
Appointment to Boards, Committees, and Commissions, report from City Manager.
City Manager's Communication Number 301, dated September 17, is received into and made part of the record. May I have a motion to approve the appointments in the report?
So moved.
Okay, the motion is to approve the appointment of Tim Hagyard to the Tucson-Pima County Historical Commission. We've got a motion, a second. By any chances, Mr. Hagyard here? Well, we want to thank him for being willing to serve. All of these jobs are without compensation, and they really do help us understand the issues in the community. Any other discussion on this matter? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye, 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 I don't know, did I hear enough ayes? Aye. Okay, anyone opposed? That's a good way to tell. All right, motion carries. Are there any personal appointments to be made at this time? Okay, hearing none, we will move on to item three.
Mayor and Council Report Summary of Current Events.
City Manager's Communication Number 299, dated September 17, is received into and made part of the record. This time has been scheduled to allow members of the Mayor and Council to report on current events. Does any Council member have anything to report at this time? Looking down the line, Councilmember Romero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to invite the community to two wonderful events. One is happening tomorrow. The public is invited to view the demonstration of Suntran's first zero-emission battery electric bus. The event is hosted by the City of Tucson, Suntran, Tucson Electric Power, the Gilig Company, which is the leading manufacturer of heavy-duty transit buses in the United States, and Suntran is leasing this pilot bus for one year to begin testing the applicability of electric buses in the City of Tucson. Money from a federal grant will be used by Suntran to purchase three additional electric buses. Those planning to attend the electric bus demonstration can support the environment by using public transit. So hop on a bus and come tomorrow, Wednesday, September 18th, at 9:00 a.m. We are going to be located on 12th Street between South Scott and South Sixth Avenues. For more information, please feel free to call 792-9222 to get additional detail. That's tomorrow morning at 9:00. And the Second Annual Barrio Santa Cruz Fiesta, a neighborhood fiesta which includes live bands, a car show, forklodico, kids' activities, food, and mariachi, will take place Saturday, October 5th, from 12:00 noon to about maybe 6:00 p.m. It will be at Ormsby Park, located at 899 West 24th Street. This event is free to the entire community. Whoever wants to join Barrio Santa Cruz Fiesta on October 5th, everyone is welcome. I'm very proud, in particular, of Barrio Santa Cruz for putting together such an amazing event, it's their second year in a row, and they've been organizing their neighborhood or reorganizing their neighborhood because it's one of the oldest neighborhoods in the City of Tucson, but for a very long time, they stopped meeting, and in the last two years, this neighborhood, Barrio Santa Cruz, has been doing amazing work, including cleaning every Saturday, doing neighborhood cleanups every Saturday, reopening Ormsby Center, which had been closed due to the recession. They've applied for and worked with Ward 1 to receive funds for water harvesting and tree planting in their neighborhood. This neighborhood is rocking and rolling, I'm very proud of them, and please join them. Last year was their first year, and they had music and food and activities for the kids, so please join us Saturday, October 5th, at 12:00 noon at Ormsby Park, located at 899 West 24th Street. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Cunningham?
Couple things. Number one, I want to congratulate the Ward 2 staff and the City of Tucson. Within a month, 75% of the energy that we use at Ward 2 will come from solar power. It's one of the 31 projects, I think, we advanced last year. We're going to set up an energy fund that will allow us to recycle those muddies and invest into other things, and I think in the next year or two, we'll be able to announce that the city itself will be 100% renewable energy as well, the same as the U of A did, so congratulations on that. The second thing is, years ago, you may or may not remember, if you're from the east side, we had a farmer's market at Udall Park. We had to cancel it because it turned out that the city didn't really own the park outright. There was a patent that we had made with the Bureau of Land Management many years ago, and despite going through the 80s through four different, the tenure of four different congresspeople in that ward, and were in that, in that ward, in that congressional district, we've been able to secure the patent. That patent was actually delivered to the council this afternoon, and that allows us to do so many other things at that park. It is really special that the Parks Department stepped up and got it done. Special thanks to Congressman Rahava, Congresswoman Kirkpatrick, former Congresswoman McSally, and Senator Sinema for helping us get it across the finish line. So with that, those are my announcements, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Councilmember Fimbres?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. From Sunday, September 15th to October 15th, National Hispanic Heritage Month is commemorated, celebrating the histories, cultures, and contributions of American citizens whose ancestors come from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. As we honor Latino culture during National Hispanic Heritage Month, we should reflect on what makes Latinos such a strong contributing force to America. Latinos across America make countless positive contributions to our military, education, the arts, the economy, and the social fabric which makes our nation great and unique. On Monday, September 16th, the Pasquayaki Nation held a breakfast to recognize groups of schools and organizations that were selected to receive funding through the Pasquayaki 12% Revenue Program for this year. Three schools from Ward 5, Elizabeth Borton, Valencia Middle School, and Lynn Yurkides Elementary, received funding for the Pasquayaki Nation. I want to thank Chairman Robert Valencia, Vice Chair Pete Yucopichio, and the Pasquayaki Tribe Council for their commitment to help our entire community through the program and their leadership. On Thursday, September 5th, I had the privilege of honoring and recognizing Joe Soto, who had his retirement party at the Alcasino Ballroom. Joe worked 35 years for Pima County Department and did a lot for his department as well as for our community, as well as with many community projects. I want to congratulate Joe for the next chapter of his life. On Wednesday, September 11th, I had the privilege of attending the 9/11 memorial service that was held by the students at Senega Middle High School, excuse me, Senega High School. It was a touching and moving service. I want to thank the students and all the staff who organized the memorial service, as well as for giving me the opportunity to speak about the 9/11 and how it affected me and my family and our community. A longtime community advocate, Terry Pat Smith, with Interfaith Community Services, has retired, leaving a big void for us. She will be missed. On September, on Saturday, September 21st, the American Legion Post 36 will host at 2:00 p.m. Patriot's Day, which will be commemorated at the Tucson, at the American Partry Memorial Beacon, located at 5809 East 22nd Street, next to American Legion Post 36. Patriot Day occurs to remember those who lost their lives on the September 11th attack. Also on September, Saturday, September 21st, to mark the United Nations International Day of Peace, Drum Up for Peace will take place at the Quincy Douglas Neighborhood Center, 1575 East 36, starting at 6:00 p.m. Mayor Rothschild will be joining myself at the event with a proclamation and which he will read, making the International Day of Peace. And on September, on Saturday, September 28th, the Gospel Family Festival will take place, starting at 11:00 a.m. at Willie Blake Park. I think Willie's in the audience. All right. 3525 South North Vista. The Western Hills 2 Neighborhood has helped to organize this community event, for which Ward 5 is a proud sponsor. And on September 22nd, I want to wish my wonderful wife, Mary, a very happy 21st birthday.
Ooh, Richard.
And on Tuesday, September 24th, my Chief of Staff, Mark Kerr, will be celebrating his birthday. I want to also wish him a very happy birthday. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, let's move on to item four.
City Managers Report Summary of Current Events.
City Manager's Communication Number 300, dated September 17, is received into and made part of the record. This time has been scheduled to allow City Manager to report on current events. Mr. Manager?
No report, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Item five?
Liquor License Applications, report from City Manager.
City Manager's Communication Number 302, dated September 17, is received into and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, please read the liquor license agenda.
Your Honor, this evening's liquor license agenda, under item 5B, we have four requests for new license, one request for person transfer, three requests for person-location transfer. Under item 5C, we have 20 requests for special events. Under item 5D, we have two requests for agent change, acquisition of control. Staff has indicated that all applicants are in compliance with the city requirements, with the exception of item C15, that application has been withdrawn by the applicant. Also on this evening's agenda, under item 5C10, Councilmember Durham will declare conflict of interest. Items C14 and 16 through 18, Councilmember Kazachik will declare conflict of interest. An appropriate motion would be to forward items B 1 through 6, 8, C 1 through 9, 11 through 13, 19 through 20, and D 1 and 2 to the State Liquor Board with a recommendation of approval.
Get that motion?
Mr. Mayor, move forward the liquor license to the State Liquor Board with the recommendation of approval.
Second. Okay, Councilmember Durham?
I was wondering why, oh. I thought you said you weren't going to do that again. I was wondering why in number 6, B 6, the the Voice KTV Ward 3 application, it says, "Action must be taken by July 19, 2019." That's about two months ago.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'd have to look at that, there may have been an issue that had to be resolved by the applicant prior to this, so we've notified the state that this application would be taken up this evening. The July 19th date was the date, per statute, the 60-day requirement, but we can go beyond that as long as we notify the state.
Okay, great.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second, and I am assuming this motion doesn't include the ones that'll have the Durham recusal and the Kazachik recusals, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Any discussion on those? Any discussion on those? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that motion passes. What's the next motion?
Your Honor, I'm going to move that we pass and adopt items 16, 17, 18, and 18. I believe those are the three that Kazachik has to recuse.
So there's, for Mr. Durham, it is item C10, for Mr. Kazachik, it is item C14, 16, 17, and 18.
Okay, I add 14. So 14, 16, 17, and 18.
Okay, we've got that motion.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Kazachik will be recusing himself on this matter. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion passes, which is the one for Mr. Durham.
Your Honor, I move that we pass and adopt, or send item 10 for recommendation of approval.
Okay, any discussion? We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that passes 6-0, and we'll recognize Councilmember Durham's recusal. Are there any other liquor item matters that we need to take up tonight?
Yes. Yes, Your Honor. B, item 5B7.
And is that in Councilmember Kazachik's ward? Okay, Councilmember Kazachik, it's yours.
I have a question for staff, first of all. On our material, this is with the respect to Beer Nerds. It is almost exactly immediately across the street from the Islamic Center of Tucson. In our material, it says, on the police report, it says there is no church or school within 300 feet. The Islamic Center of Tucson is like 60 feet away. What's up with that?
Mr. Mayor, just based on that, I would say that's an error.
And is it, does it mean that the application is...
So, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Kazachik, I know that TPD does have concerns after that was the initial review, and they have expressed concerns to us at this point.
What is the restriction on proximity to a church for a liquor license?
300 feet? 300? Go ahead, Roger.
Roger, you want to go ahead?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the requirements within the distance from a church would be 300 feet. I believe that the reason that the Islamic Center is not considered a church is, it is considered a prayer center and a cultural center, but not under the definition of a church.
So that's absurd. I mean, what you're saying is not, but I've been there multiple times observing church services, observing worship services in the center. They hold them multiple times every single day of the week. And for us to take the position that that is not a church is probably actionable, if not. Now, how do we define a church if not that? I mean, what else do you have to do? Have a steeple or what? I mean, I'm not trying to be facetious, but God almighty, that, well, sorry.
Let me ask this. When those things are filed, are they self-identified? And by the way, I'm not disagreeing with you, Councilmember Kazachik, but I'm just trying to understand how that classification could have come about.
It passes the duck test, folks.
Yeah, I think typically we would use the land use definition, which is regularly used for worship services.
And it is.
And it is.
And therefore, the application is, should be withdrawn.
Well, I think based on that, the appropriate action tonight would be for you to make a motion or recommend denial based on that specific reason, and any others that are giving you concern.
Then we can dig into a few of the others, too. There are some cards here. First of all, I'm going to call one person in favor of the application and one person who is opposed, and so Fred Ronstadt is here to speak in favor.
Mr. Manager, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Fred Ronstadt. I'm a resident of Tucson, Arizona, live in the Rinkon Heights. I know the applicant through my relationship with him as the executive director of the North Fourth Avenue Merchants Association, and I make it clear that it's not an endorsement from the association. This is a personal endorsement of the applicant's. I've known them during my tenure as the executive director on Fourth Avenue to be extraordinarily responsible bar owners. They have two establishments on the avenue, and I make a correction. Mr. Heads is owned by one of the applicants. Drunken Chicken is owned by two of the applicants. And then this third application is being made by all three applicants. And that's an important note because Mica, who started Mr. Heads, elevated one of his staff people to become an owner, who now is a co-owner of Drunken Chicken. And then those two people have elevated another employee to become an owner, and that's going to be Beer Nerds. And I think that speaks to who they are as community members. They have an annual fundraiser to generate funds for local nonprofits. They're the first to reach out to their neighbors when there are issues around, and actually, they're very proactive in looking for ways to work together with other merchants along the avenue. I think they're very honorable people. They would do an awesome job with their new endeavor near the university campus. Thank you.
Thanks, Fred. And I don't disagree that Mica and his team are honorable folks. Maria Molina?
Mayor and city council members, good evening. On behalf of the Islamic Center of Tucson, I'd like to reiterate our stance against the transfer approval of a liquor license for a prospective business called Beer Nerds. It's a, as you know, microbrewery that intends to establish itself 65 feet from our center. The Islamic Center of Tucson opened its doors at its current location in 1990, 24 years before the rezoning of the area allowed liquor to be sold in closer proximity to schools and places of worship. Like many religious centers, we not only serve as a place to pray, but as a community center. Congregants come for weekly religious services and also for weddings, religious holiday observance, and to meet with friends, partake in potlucks, and maybe even celebrate the birth of a new baby. Additionally, hundreds of children come to ICT for language and religious instruction that takes place frequently throughout the week at varying hours, both indoors and outdoors. Due to the frequency of problems that ICT has encountered involving intoxicated students and tenants of adjacent apartment buildings, we feel at fear that an approval of a liquor license transfer at this location would result in an increase of disturbance and overall unsafe atmosphere. This would tie up the law enforcement, which is concerning for surrounding neighbors as well. Potential city and state profits from liquor sales would be offset by the cost of additional police presence required to respond to disturbances. As the location is already inundated with dangerous incidents resulting from inebriated students and tenants, the Islamic Center of Tucson respectfully requests that the Beer Nerd liquor license transfer be declined. It is an establishment incompatible with safeties needed to host the large numbers of children that we teach on a weekly basis and conflicting with the overall neighborly sense of harmony. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mary. We're going to make a, I'm going to make a recommendation in a moment, but here's how this works, is we make a recommendation to the State Liquor Board for approval or denial. And my concern, Mica, is that we make a recommendation, and part of it is going to be based on simply the proximity to the Islamic Center, in terms of it being a religious institution, a church, a mosque. It's not a church, but you know what I'm saying. And so before I go through the other reasons, I would simply ask whether or not, based on that factor alone, you would simply withdraw the application. Yeah? Because I don't want to take a chance of being reversed by the State Liquor Board, and then we get into this situation and go to the taller one.
Okay, hello?
You can go to the taller mic if you want, just drop it down.
I'm not, I'm not very tall, so.
Knock yourself out.
This one, I feel a little more comfortable.
It's all yours.
So to start, I'd like to say, you know, we've, you know, tried to research as much about this as we can. You know, I've emailed you back in May to ask if you thought there would be any legal restrictions. At the time, you said you did not foresee any. The TPD report said we were within the distance, and when I use the Google Maps, it says that we're 357 feet. If you type in 1011 North Tendal Suite 101 to 901 East, 1st Avenue, it says it's 357 feet. I haven't gone out there with a tape measure, but that's the calculations I've gone off of when I've seen it. I can understand the fear and anxiety that the Islamic Center would have, being the trouble they've had in the past. I have children as well. I have a three-year-old and a five-year-old, and their safety is absolutely a top concern of mine. I'm currently serving as vice president on the Fourth Avenue Merchants Association, and we talk consistently about safety. I talk a lot about safety with the beer booths. I talk a lot about safety just with protecting people against just the terrible things that are happening in the world. We are people that are very involved in our neighborhood. We are present at our businesses seven days a week. We are always around and accessible. We're people that try and uplift the community, and we're not people that try and bring it down. The license we're transferring over, the number seven license, is a beer license only. It's not a liquor. There's no liquor sales, and we did that intentionally. We just wanted to do beer over there. It's the same license, removing it from the Drunken Chicken Restaurant over to there. We don't operate as a bar. The Drunken Chicken does not have bar hours. We're a restaurant that's won four awards for our food. We're nominated for two more awards this year. These awards have been through the Arizona Daily Star and the Tucson Weekly. We're nominated again for Best Fried Chicken and Best Locally Owned Restaurant. We're people that care deeply about the community, and we're not going to cause a nuisance. Some of the trouble they're having is, you know, there's the Circle K up the road. The guy working at Circle K is not Title IV certified. They don't properly, they're not properly trained on how to identify signs of intoxication. All of our staff will be. We will be in the neighborhood, and we will be present. So I would think we'd be an asset into helping observe and protect the area. We wouldn't be, in addition, to trouble in the neighborhood. I've reached out to Mak Sud. I talked to him on the phone after I got a phone call from Delma, and she said that he wanted me to reach out. I did reach out, had a very pleasant, very nice conversation with him on the phone. I've reached out to him since, because we were going to try and set up a meeting with their board, so we can sit down and talk to them and let them know a little bit about us and who we are and why we do things. My history on Fourth Avenue and in Tucson has been to try and build things that are fun for the city, that are enjoyable for people, and never to cause harm. Even with the bar, Ben, who started off as our security staff there, that worked his way into management and now ownership with me, by his leadership with the rest of our door staff, they helped look out for the entire Fourth Avenue area, or our block, on the weekends. They've helped when there's been trouble over by the taco cart, even though it's unrelated to us. And we've helped facilitate a Facebook group that a lot of the bars use to communicate when there is a troublesome person on Fourth Avenue, that we can put that on there so other bar owners and other staff know, say, hey, watch out for this guy, you know, they might be violent, they might be intoxicated. So I would feel we would be an asset and not another source of trouble. And again, this is not going to be a bar. We're not doing bar hours. We would do the same hours that we have at Drunken Chicken. And again, it's the exact same license, we're just moving it over, which is 10:00 to 10:00, 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM, and on Fridays and Saturdays, we stay open until midnight. We have no desire to stay open until 2:00 in the morning. We have no desire to be a nuisance in a neighborhood that we're going to be part of. We like to be proud of what we do.
Okay, thank you. It's beer and wine, not just beer. It also allows off-site sales. Let me share with you some, and this isn't about, there are two bases for, no, three, because I'm going to include the church piece in this motion, but there are two bases. We make a decision based on whether or not to approve. One is personal attributes, and that is not at play here. The second is saturation. The second is the area. On 9/11, a guy showed up at the ICT and was in a very threatening manner. We had to have, called TPD over. TPD is investigating it. About three weeks ago, we had yet another recurrence of the Islamic Center being pelted by beer cans and bottles and beer being dumped on people. A week or so before that, somebody had tossed out of the center some, a curtain rod or something that wound up penetrating somebody's windshield. This isn't just an occasional occurrence, it's like the third time, third year in a row, and we get a new crop of students in. And so the fact is that there is a saturation issue, there's a proximity issue with respect to the Islamic Center, with respect to the behaviors that we continually see on that site. If you told me 357 feet, that would have been fine. It's more like 65. You could probably throw a rock and don't try it at the center and hit it from where you're proposing. So for all of those reasons, I'm going to recommend denial on this because of the proximity, the saturation, the fact that there's a church within 300 feet. And I would hope that that alone would be dispositive, and hope that the State Liquor Board recognizes that you shouldn't have to be a member of the Christian faith to be considered a church institution in this community. So with that, I recommend denial.
I'm going to second.
Sir, may also, just one more note, just for the record, there has been two other businesses there that have been licensed businesses to sell alcohol in that same exact location. Goodness had a liquor license, and Post Goodness was QQ sushi, and both of those places did have liquor licenses.
And we recommended denial on that.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second.
I'm going to second the motion, Mr. Mayor, because, not because I doubt that you are a responsible business owner, it has nothing to do with the quality of the work that you all do and actually the wonderful story that it is, that you all expand and help each other. But because it is a congregation, it's a mosque, and there is rules, laws, state laws, that govern the proximity of a liquor license close to a church. And so we have to treat the Islamic Center of Tucson just like we treat every other religious institution in this city and respect the proximity that it is. So that's why I'm going to second the motion.
Anybody else? I don't know how the vote's going to come out. I don't know where people are. If, for some reason, which I suspect, we vote to deny, a couple things. Number one, if you are within 300 feet, it ain't going to happen, you know? And that's something that's not clear on the record, but I can tell you, depending where you measure from, because part of the measurement, I think we're talking about, is the ability in that building for drunk students to do bad things. The saturation issue is a bit subjective, but in this case, there's probably a pretty good case. I would suggest to you that if this is denied, and then you're denied at the state, that you have those conversations with the center. They may be absolutely decided based on, you know, the amount of bars there are there or places that serve liquor. But they're good people, and they're going to be, you've got to have those conversations first anyway, and it sounds like from what you said, you started down that road, but clearly that's not been completed. So that's all I'm going to say about it. And so I guess we're ready to vote. And do we do this by, we can do it by just making a motion. All those, so the motion is to deny the license, correct? Okay. All those in favor of denying the license say aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? All right. Your appeals to the state board.
Your appeals to the state board.
Okay.
Okay. Is that it for liquor?
That's all, your honor.
Okay, let's go on to item six.
Call to the audience.
At this time, any member of the public is allowed to address the mayor and council on any issue, except for items scheduled for a public hearing at this meeting. Please make sure you've read the information on the back of the speaker's card before making your presentation. Speakers are limited to three-minute presentations. Call the audience is scheduled to last for 30 minutes. Pursuant to the Arizona Open Meeting Law, individual council members may ask the city manager to review a matter, ask the matter be placed on a future agenda, or respond to criticism made by speakers. However, the mayor and council may not discuss or take legal action on matters raised during call the audience. Okay, so we have far more cards than we're going to be able to take tonight. There are a number that are on specific topics. There's really three where there's a number of cards. We've got some miscellaneous cards that'll take us through our time. I'm going to take the people who've come sort of in fours and fives and take those first, and then we'll take, usually I take the miscellaneous first, but we'll save the miscellaneous to what I call the miscellaneous, the one-offs, to the end. So the first one has to do with Savano and small business and a coffee shop closing out there. I'm going to take a card, and then I'm going to ask the city attorney to give a status update on that for all of you who are here. And I don't know whether there's a best representative I can call, I mean, I can call on any of the four. I'll call on Ron Kennedy. And Ron, if you would rather have someone else speak, but Ron Kennedy.
First, I'd like to ask your patience, I'm waiting for new glasses.
Excuse me?
I'm waiting for new glasses.
Oh. You probably ought to move over to the taller one, I think you're good.
Mayor, City Council, my name is Ron Kennedy, and I'm a resident of Savano. I'm going to read a petition that has been given to you. The petition has 3,180 signatures with it. These are all participants and patrons of the cafe at Savano. They're all mostly registered voters also. The Savano Coffee Shop has been at the city of our neighborhood socially beneficial to the community for the last eight years, and a favorite meeting spot. What's more, it's been of political value to the city of Tucson, who has for years touted Savano as a village, gets lots of mileage from the fact that it's a great, high-performance, mixed-use community in the country, with the Savano Coffee Shop at its apex. In response to the city council's inconsistent interpretation of the pad agreement zoning requirements specific to the Savano community, the owners have given up any hope that a viable solution can be reached and have decided to close their doors. This is devastating to our community and the local property owners. We are concerned that property values in the surrounding community will suffer. We, the Savano community, civic business owners and residents of the surrounding neighborhoods, are asking the city council to do the following. Provide a variance for the coffee shop owners so that they continue functioning as a business. Two, work with due diligence and in good faith to find a long-term economical and viable solution to the zoning problems. Three, ask the city council to instruct its departments, especially the planning and zoning department and the violation department, to encourage small businesses in our community and other communities. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Rankin, I know that I've received, and probably all of us have received, a number of emails this week, and I know that staff is doing something. Could you advise those who are here on the issue and concerned as to what the current status is?
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, given this is call the audience, I would suggest that appropriate direction would be for staff to follow up with the dissemination of truthful, accurate information about the history of the issues with this particular location, including the fact that the city had not taken any action to shut down the business, had not issued a notice of violation threatening to shut down the business, and had made overtures to work with the property owner to resolve any of the zoning and permitting issues at that property. So if you give that direction, we will be happy to provide that history to all the folks who want to see.
All right, well, I'm going to give you that direction. I have the four addresses of the speakers who are here tonight and their phone numbers to complicate matters for you just a little more. I think these folks are here on the coffee shop, but I know there was another issue related to a gym or something like that. So if you could, I'm going to hand you all these four cards or get them to you, and then if you can get responses, we may want the clerk's office, these are, all we ask for is addresses and phone numbers, which isn't the most effective way. I may ask the clerk to go back to the audience and hand you these cards. And if you have email addresses, if you want to add your email address, that'd be the most efficient. So, all right, and I think we are aware, both planning development services and legal, of some of the issues out there. So, all right? Appreciate it. Clerk, Mr. Clerk, if you can get those to the folks. Okay. The next one, where we have a lot of cards and not a lot of time, is T-21. T-21 is the issue related to tobacco and whether the age should be raised to 21. We have a number of cards. I'm going to only, I'm going to take only two here, but I want to make sure that in one case, because if there's, if it's all one point of view, that's, we can listen to one or two people and understand it, but if there's an opposing point of view, I want to hear that too. So I just want to ask Mike Humphrey, and I'm not calling on you now, Mike Humphrey? Is Mike Humphrey here? Mike, before you get up, are you in favor of raising the age to 21? Okay. So I'm going to call on two other people who, so I will first call on Strider, and your handwriting is not very good, young man. Bodenberg?
Bodenberg, sorry.
All right, it's okay. My handwriting's really bad, too. Come on up.
Good evening, Mayor.
You're probably eligible for the tall one, too.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to talk. First, I just want to say that in 2017, Juul Labs was created in San Francisco. Two years later, the city, the birthplace of Juul, has banned the devices completely. You can no longer buy any non-FDA-approved e-cigarette in-store or online. Let there be an inspiration to us as we move forward in the future. Anyways, my name is Strider Bodenberg, and I am a senior in high school. I have a very athletic background, I do well in school, and I come from a pretty open family. My sophomore year, I, like many others, succumbed to peer pressure and innocently bought a Juul, to fit in and to be cool. Fast forward a couple months, and now I'm vaping marijuana like it's my asthma inhaler. Two years after countless failed attempts, I was finally able to quit. Looking back at this now, I have realized this all-too-common cycle starts with a tasty but deadly vape, the Juul. I wish I could say that my generation and your kids are nicotine and drug-free, drug-free, I'm sorry, but I cannot. We have to face the facts. Last year, the national vaping rate increased by 78% in high schoolers, and more alarmingly, by 45% among middle schoolers. Currently, there are over 5 million high schoolers vaping in the U.S. and nearly 1 million middle schoolers. This is happening locally as well. An estimated 16.1% of high schoolers vape in Arizona, and estimated 45% of Pima County sophomores have tried vapes at least once. As a local teenager and a high schooler, I am telling you, those percentages are vastly underreported, quadrupled the 16.1%, and almost double the 45%. We cannot afford to dwell on the desires of retailers. While you stall, we die. Over seven people have died related to vaping, and there are more than 450 in the hospital with serious and life-threatening respiratory illnesses. By not increasing, voting to increase the sales age to 21, you would be allowing me, my friends, your kids, and the youth of Tucson as a whole to be taken advantage of, poisoned, and slowly killed by these big tobacco companies. If steps aren't taken quickly, let's face it, soon you'd be allowing the same thing to happen to elementary school students. We cannot afford to let this blow into an epidemic where my generation and your kids live in a world where everyone smokes. It is due time to stand up to these big tobacco companies. What I'm asking of you today is not that big a favor. I'm asking you to care, to care, to take the first step and vote to increase the minimum sales age to 21. Then we can focus on other policies to expand the safety and well-being of Tucson youth, like focusing on education and giving youth the tools and resources to stay drug-free. I need your help. My friends, they need your help. Your kids, they need your help. The youth of Tucson as a whole needs your help, and we need it now. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Pretty hard to beat that. My name is Brian Hummel. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you again. I'm the Arizona Director of Government Relations for the American Cancer Society Cancer Action Network. Earlier this morning, I was in the unfortunate position of putting my organization on the record as opposed to the recently revised, proposed county ordinance regarding tobacco regulation. The ordinance was not the ordinance that you were prepared to vote on last month. We understand the legislative process will rarely, if ever, produce perfect results, but we're not seeking perfect. We are, however, seeking real tobacco control regulation that will result in reduced youth initiation of this dangerous product, the leading cause of preventable death in the United States. In the most recent stakeholder process initiated by the county over the last two weeks, despite the engagement and continued interaction by stakeholder groups, the ordinance was distorted into a policy with incredibly limited enforcement tools. The policy went from a license suspension of 30 days on a second violation to zero suspension. The same with a third violation, zero suspension. During the discussion at the stakeholder meetings, the original proponents of the ordinance suggested 10-day suspension, or a seven-day suspension, or even a three-day However, that was ignored, and we ended up with this zero suspension. Additionally, last month, many of you heard representatives from the retail industry saying, "Treat us like you treat alcohol." We'd be fine with that. Either of those compromises, we're fine with. So that initial ordinance that was presented wasn't perfect. We're not seeking perfect, we're seeking a resolution that will help address this We know the elements of tobacco control that work at the local level include tobacco retail licensing with frequent compliance checks and real penalties on repeat offenders. These, coupled with the newer Tobacco 21 strategy, show great promise in protecting young people from tobacco, but they all have to work together. You've heard of the local business that was fined more than $11,000 by the feds because they had six violations. They're still selling tobacco. They paid the fine. We don't seek the penalty of a suspension of the license to sell tobacco because we want it to happen, we want it to serve as a deterrent. We appreciate the work that you've done so far, especially you, Councilmember Durham, leading it, and pledge to continue to work with you to protect youth from tobacco. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. All right, now we're going to move on to the OPUS development. Now, this is on for later this evening. We have two folks here that want to speak in favor of moving forward, and we have four against. I could take two and two, or I think the representatives are essentially Tom Warren, who's, will be speaking for, and Shannon Riggs, who'll be speaking against. My concern is, I don't, I can't have a public hearing, so this is the only chance, call the audience. At the same time, my guess is that when we get to the matter, some of us may still have questions for both Tom and for Shannon. So exercising, I guess, maybe we'll do it this way. All you've got to do is talk out loud long enough. I'm going to take one card, I'm going to save Tom and Shannon for when it comes to the actual matter, and then I'm going to take two cards that are against, and one card, the other card that's for, so we can get a preview, I suppose, and then we'll move on as the matter comes up. So the first, so it's Tom and Shannon, I'm going to hold off on the two of you, but let's go to Constance Nagley. And if Constance, if you want to waive your time to somebody who's already put in a card, you could do that, but why don't you, why don't you come up? Who is this?
Mayor and council, my name is Judy Sensabar. As president of West University Neighborhood Association and a board member of the historic Fourth Avenue Coalition, I need to speak to the importance of timeline, transparency, and the unfortunate reality that's become the G-Plat. From our point of view, it looks like you, the mayor and council, has not realized the power you hold in granting such a subsidy and the potential it has as a levering agent. There is a sense, a sense of unneeded urgency with the G-Plat for the partners on Fourth Pad site. The optics are that it is being fast-tracked when compared to other G-Plat approval processes, and we do not understand why. It was studied this summer with little to no community input. The city manager has run the numbers and recommended to approve the G-Plat, but what's the rush? The plans for the project haven't even been approved. There has been no IID Design Review Committee where there is a chance for public input. If you are going to give away millions of dollars to an out-of-state developer who's already asked for additional concessions in their most recent plan submittal, shouldn't some of this money go directly back into the community, most impacted by the development? And impact fees do not count, as we have no assurances as to how, where, or when they will be spent. Who are the people who will bear both the inevitable and the unintended consequences of the project? Me, my neighbors, and the merchants along Fourth Avenue. You now have a chance to gain more from the agreement if you help see negotiations through for our coalition to enter into a community benefits agreement with OPUS, the name of the corporation who plans to put up the 13-story building. Instead of just caving in to what many construe as flat-out corporate welfare, give us time to get OPUS to the table. We've sent a draft CBA to their reps and are hopeful we might come to some terms, but we need the city to support our efforts. We ask that you not only postpone your vote on the G-Plat for the 213 Fourth Avenue tonight, but make it clear that it will only be approved if a CBA has been agreed to by the developer. Once the G-Plat is approved, there is little remaining leverage to encourage them to work with us on finding the best possible ways to integrate this project into the very special landscape that is Fourth Avenue.
All right, thank you, Judy. Brett Hopper, is Brett Hopper here?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. I appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. My name is Brett Hopper. I'm the Vice President of Real Estate Development for OPUS Development Company. I'm at 2425 East Camelback Road in Phoenix, Arizona. I'm at 2425 East Camelback Road in Phoenix, Arizona. I would like to take a couple of minutes and provide you with a little bit of my perspective with respect to this issue. We're excited about this project. We've been working on this with members of the city staff for over a year now, and we also share the neighborhood's concerns about preserving and enhancing the Fourth Avenue charm. That experience, that Fourth Avenue experience is what really attracted us to this project in the first place. This is both a unique and challenging site. It's unique in that it's the bridge that links downtown Tucson to the university community and has this special, unique characteristic of Fourth Avenue adjacent to it. It's challenging in that the site is oddly shaped, and the approved design criteria, which was adopted with the PAD approval over a year and a half ago, has very stringent stipulations that ensure the rich history of Fourth Avenue is preserved. We're very proud of the design of this project that we've come up with and how it speaks to the surrounding communities. I can assure you that there is no other project within the Opus system that looks anything like this Fourth Avenue project. Every site of the project has been uniquely customized for this particular site and will never be replicated. This hearing is solely to determine whether we have met the requirements to qualify for a G-Plat, not to create new stipulations with the PAD that was approved unanimously by Mayor and City Council in April of 2018. From the beginning, our desire has always been to be collaborative and inclusive with the community and all stakeholders, those that are directly affected by our project as well as those indirectly affected, including the Fourth Avenue Merchants Association and the Historic Fourth Avenue Coalition. But we also believe that all of this needs to happen with the proper sequencing, and that all parties need to act in good faith. In this particular case, the PAD, with all the associated zoning stipulations, was approved a year and a half ago. All of the stakeholders and all the stakeholder groups had a seat at the table at that time and had an opportunity to voice their concerns, including the Fourth Avenue Coalition. In reliance on that approved zoning and the associated stipulations, Opus designed the project. Nevertheless, Tom Warren and our lead architect from Minneapolis flew out to Tucson specifically for the purpose to meet with both the Merchants Association and the Coalition in March of this year, to share with them our vision and to collect their feedback. Since that time, we incorporated many of the suggesting comments into our design and made our formal submittal to the city. Given the unique nature of this project and public benefits being afforded to the city of Tucson, we also sought a G-Plat to assist us in making this project a reality. The city engaged in independent economic feasibility study to validate the public benefits and concluded that they do, in fact, significantly exceed the tax benefits afforded the development.
Sir, unfortunately, your time is up. If you could just conclude real quickly, and I know Tom will probably get an opportunity later, so...
And I appreciate that. I strongly encourage the City Council to not delay tonight's vote, but to continue, but to vote tonight on the G-Plat so that we can move forward in bringing this beautiful project to fruition. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we'll take one more on this one and then move on. Arlene Leaf?
Hello. I was here for that April meeting. The Historic Fourth Avenue Coalition is a result of the meeting, because we weren't listened to. So, let me just start with that. That isn't what I intended to say. I came here, I'm a member of the Fort Bama and HFAC, but I didn't come here tonight as representing either of those. I've come representing myself and my business. I have the Tucson Thrift Shop. I've been on Fourth Avenue for 40 years. In the April meeting was my concern, and my concern with all the development has not been put on the side. I just wanted to tell a little story before I began, is I have employees, I have like seven employees, and now there's no place for my employees to park. So, the city made available spaces that we could buy for our employees. And I had one, I went and bought $120 a year, and then I bought another one that was $30 a month, and I bought two of those for, so at least I could have more employees parking, because it's a problem for everyone. I recently went down there to renew, and I just threw it out there, because they were saying, "No, no, there's no annual ones, no annual ones." And I just threw it out there again. By any chance, is there an annual one? They said, "Yes, on Fifth Avenue." I'm on Fourth Avenue, right in back of me on Fifth Avenue, we now have dedicated parking. So, on the one hand, cool, I bought it for my employees. On the other hand, what are my customers going to do? What are my customers? Where are my customers going to park? There's no place on Fourth Avenue to park. You have the meter for two hours, now they want to extend that so it's at night. I was president of the Fourth Avenue Association in 1996, and at that time, we talked to the city about a parking facility, a garage, something on Fourth Avenue. They wanted to put in meters. We said, "No, no meters, it'll kill the business." So, we made like an agreement that we would get a garage, then we could put in meters. Now we have the meters, and it's all going to pay for your downtown development. So, that is my urgency as a merchant. I'll be very honest, I'm terrified. You know, I have a store, I've been building up my business for 40 years. One of my big times is Halloween, okay? So, now, we have Spirit Halloween going in where Office Depot used to be with about 200 parking spaces. I see the business on Fourth Avenue is slower, and I think because now people feel there's no place to park and there's construction. So, you have to take these things into consideration for us. So, oh, I just wanted to say quickly, to me, the GLPT represents my parking garage. That's the money that could have solved the situation and paid to maintain this community that people have spent years developing for the city.
Okay, thanks, Arlene. All right, so the rest are kind of miscellaneous cards. We're already at close to half an hour. I'm going to extend 20 minutes. I don't know that everybody will get heard, but we'll do the best we can. We'll start with Colette Althaffer. Is Colette here?
Good evening, my name is Colette Althaffer, and I'm a resident of the city of Tucson. Most people do not remember the name Clara Peller, but they do remember the famous line she uttered for a Wendy's commercial, "Where's the beef?" I was thinking about Ms. Peller the other day while reading some of the promises made by developers who were seeking G-Plats. There were plenty of rosy predictions about how much money these tax incentives would pour back into our community, but if these projections were actually true, why did I keep asking, "Where's the money?" Tucson's residents voted to increase the sales tax for road repairs, but you are now telling us to form assessment districts for road repairs. Where's the money? We just passed a bond package to pay for additional green space, but now you are going to add another fee to our water bills to pay for green space. Where's the money? The more our citizens study the various incentives that developers enjoy, from reduced taxes to fewer regulations, the more those citizens recognize the growing inequities these sweetheart deals create. Like Clara Peller in the Wendy's commercial, those citizens are discovering that that big fluffy bun of rosy promises hides a microscopic beef patty of benefits. Where's the money?
Margie Rodriguez? Is Margie Rodriguez here?
I guess I'll use this one.
Yeah, you're, that's a good one for you.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilpeople. I'm here because there's a saying, "You save one life, you save all humanity." And I'm here because of what I have been witnessing regarding traffic. This past Sunday after church, I and another lady, I have a cane and she had a walker, were trying to get across the intersection in the pedestrian crosswalk, and we had cars whizzing by. And that was not the worst of what I saw. Later that evening, a woman with her infant in her stroller was trying to cross. Three cars almost hit that baby. I was livid. I'm the lady that stands out there on the corner, and motorists have seen me with my car and my cane. I'm a living witness. As a former teacher's aide in a special needs classroom, I can still remember 15 years ago when we were trying to cross our students to the bus stop so they could go to a mall and get skills in being independent. People didn't care. One of the children was autistic, was screaming and crying and frozen in place. It's difficult, and what I've seen over the years is horrific. Where have people lost their humanity? And it isn't just the people. What it is, it's also the traffic signals. You have the turn signals that coincide with the pedestrian signals, all saying to motorists and also to pedestrians, "Walk," all at the same time. They're not going to be patient, these motorists, they don't care. Last time, I actually had a face-down with a motorist. He was there, the car was right there, and I was right here. It's only until I picked up my cane, and he worried that I might bash his automobile, that he stopped. This is horrible. This is something that has to be addressed. I suggest that no lights be instructing anyone to turn onto a street when people are in the crosswalk. The same with people that are turning at a corner, because when you are elderly, when you are disabled, when you are blind, as my father, who died this past February, a veteran of World War II and Korea, I would hate to think that anyone, anyone, cannot be able to cross a crosswalk, because people don't care. I'm here to request that the lights, the turn lights, do not come on when the pedestrian light is on, and that you give more time for people who are going to be turning onto a street to make up for the fact that they're having to wait. But if they cannot wait and are that impatient that they would kill someone, that is something that needs to be addressed. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Manager, can we make sure traffic, excuse me, Department of Transportation, contact speaker?
Yes, sir, Mr. Cunningham. Ruth Beaker?
Ruth Beaker, speaking on behalf of the Board of the Tucson Residents for Responsive Government. Six years ago, a group of citizens came together to form a grassroots organization. Its motto, "Seeking Positive Change in the City of Tucson." There was no question that it could only thrive if our elected officials were open to listening to us. This evening, TRIG wants to thank all of you, but especially the three of you who will be leaving your seats in two months. We appreciate the time and the consideration you have given us to advocate, both in your offices and in this chamber. Your early acceptance of our mission means we will continue to advocate well into the future. If you find you miss dealing with city problems and you remain a Tucson resident, we invite you to join us. There's still lots of work to do. Rahina, Shirley, and Jonathan, TRIG thanks you for your service to this community.
Mr. Clerk, can you make sure the mayor gets a TRIG application?
I was going to say, I want that one back on tape. We'll see how we go the rest of the night.
And Ruth, I'm hoping that I'll just leave word one and then move over. That's what I'm hoping for. Thank you.
Okay, so I've got two from Sunrise Tucson, basically. I'll give you guys your choice, either Skylar Zong or Amelia Marsh, whoever wants to, it looks like we got our person. That was an either, not an and. Oh, excellent. Okay, so just let us know who you are.
Hi, I'm Amelia Marsh. I'm a lifelong resident of Tucson, a product of TUSD and the University of Arizona, and I'm here tonight to represent the Tucson Sunrise Movement, which has about 150 members at this point. I'm here to urge the mayor and council to declare a climate emergency and enact a Green New Deal for Tucson. I acknowledge and I appreciate that Plan Tucson has laid a foundation for sustainability in Tucson, but I must assert that its goals are not bold enough. Globally, the last five years have been the hottest on record, a trend that we have all experienced firsthand here in southern Arizona, which is considered a direct target for the effects of climate change. Tucsonans are living through more heat and less rain. We know that this reality is damaging to the most vulnerable people among us, and also to our local economy, and frankly, to our whole city, existing, ever. We also know that we have the technology and the science to address these problems. The City Council must act now, must act fast, to lead our community to resilience to the changes that are already happening, and stop from making the problem worse by powering our transportation, buildings, and industry by extractive and polluting energy sources. Our group has drafted a Tucson Green New Deal, if you all are interested in seeing it, so you can contact me for that. And if you're interested in showing your support for this movement, I invite you to the Youth Climate Strike this Friday at 4:30, right out here in Presidio Park. It's going to be a great event. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to working with you on this issue.
All right, thank you. Eric Williams?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Eric Williams, and I am a representative of the Tucson Skate Park Alliance. I'm here with my constituents. It's about, what we're all about is providing, let me put it this way, we're here to enrich the lives of Tucson skateboard community, an advocate for development of skate parks in Tucson region by providing safe and welcoming skateboards for everyone to skate, learn, and to help build the community, especially with the youth. You know, I've skated when I was little, here and there, but what I found out, I've met a lot of great people. I've come to know about myself and what I'm capable of doing. It opened up a lot of doors. But getting back to our mission here, we work closely with the Parks and Recs Department. Thank you, Brent Dennis, for helping us organize this alliance. Our main mission, besides the one I just announced, our goals are raising funds for three projects that are being in process, excuse me, process. And I'm kind of nervous right now. I haven't spoken in front of, everyone's left, so I'm just like, so you got to excuse, but I'm really trying to get this going. So anyways, we got three projects in the works right now. Cushion Street Skate Park, which we're raising fund, and also we're creating energy-efficient design and to assist in building the process of this project. Randolph Skate Park is the second one, we're doing the same, raising funds, and we're trying to improve the surface area for people, you know, to go around and skate and have something decent for them to ride. And Sanorito, thanks to the Prop 407 that Tucson passed, is in our midst, and hopefully we'll be able to get that done within the future. So, as I say, skateboarding is something that we all can enjoy, there's no age limit, but mainly, youth are really involved in doing this type of activity. It's also, one of the things that I want to point out is that it's also in the Olympics 2020, we have a local kid here named Liam Pace. He's very, very competitive, and he's also a member of our association. So, in closing, not going to be too long, you know, I say this, if your city does not have an ample skate park, then guess what? not have an ample skate park, then guess what? Your city itself is a skate park. So, thank you for, thank you for listening, and God bless America.
Between TRIG meetings, Jonathan can skate with you.
I, I'll be there. Bill DuPont, is Bill here? It's gonna be a tough line to beat, Bill.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Bill DuPont, representing Colonial Solana. As you know, you've probably received an email from me concerning Randolph North Golf Course. And the reason for that is I attended a Greens Committee meeting about a year ago where a presentation was made that Randolph North would be, well, there would be a creation of a partnership between the city and the university. And I look at that and go, well, what is our baseball partnership? Well, it's till the year 2052, and it is exclusive for the university. So, I'm gonna be dead by the time I can play at the public, but that's the main concern. Because within that discussion, there was that consideration that the Greens Committee heard, that this would be an exclusive partnership with the university, to use Randolph North, that they would be allowed to build a new clubhouse with parking off of Randolph Way. And then there is the concern about the retention-detention basin that the neighborhood of Colonial Solana fought for, for the city to have, which has reduced the need for infrastructure in the downtown area. I worked on that first phase, on the next phase for Ward 5, on three phases. And yet, the North Golf Course of the Randolph area is the overflow valve if the South Golf Course is breached, and it's an important issue to remember. I talked to John Spiker with the county water, or excuse me, flood control, and he said the same thing. It is a section of property that is to be left undeveloped so that if there is a breach, we are protected. As you know, if you walk on that bike path down Randolph Way, you are gonna see a major wall and an elevation that was in the design element, so in case there is a breach, that that would float away from the neighborhood as much as possible, but did not guarantee it. So that is why I raised all these concerns. When you say a partnership, is it exclusive? When you say major tournaments, as was presented, our major concern is where do people park? Where do they park? You have a new owner of Alcon, and that doesn't mean he's gonna give you, or they are gonna give you, the right to park there. I used to do all that work for the Race for the Cure. I went to all those vendors that live, I mean, worked or owned the businesses in Alcon to get their signature to allow the people for the Race for the Cure to park there. That was always on a Sunday morning, because most of them weren't open until 10 o'clock. And I have to say this, the women of the Race for the Cure were perfect. If they said they were gonna be out of there at 10 o'clock, they were out, and that park was spotless. But this is the concern now, where do these people park if you're gonna do a major tournament? So these are the aspects that need to be discussed, and I realize now that there's gonna be a lot of public input I've been promised, but again, this is a park that has a resolution, 924 from 1925, that states it will be for public usage. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Rankin, do you want to advise, as far as you can, what council did today?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You had an item today and gave direction to staff with respect to the Randolph North Golf Course. That direction you gave was to engage in negotiations with the University of Arizona on an agreement for future public consideration by the mayor and council, but you made some conditions very clear and very public as part of your direction. You said that any such agreement has to require that Randolph North remain an affordable public municipal golf course with rates that would be set by the mayor and council, that any redevelopment of the golf course would be for the purpose of creating a NCAA and Pro Tour quality golf course for public use, as well as use by the UFA, that the project, if it was to go forward, must include greater opportunities for youth development, including for the First T Program, with a focus on low-income opportunities for participation. You directed that any management and development of Randolph North continue to remain in the control of the city of Tucson, that the financial benefits that Randolph North provides to the overall city of Tucson Golf Enterprise program not be compromised, and that finally, consideration of any agreement by the mayor and council would occur only after public engagement.
Thank you. All right, we have time for two more cards. And all the people that don't get called, if they're still here, I'll, we'll put you on the top for next time if you so wish, or maybe somebody who I'm gonna call won't wanna talk, but that's only a hint. Willie, you wanna, Willie Blake, you wanna speak?
Yes.
All right.
This won't be long. I didn't come to complain, and I remember standing in this very podium many times, asking for help, asking the council if you would support me in the Bridges Project, and man oh man, it was some long days for me. And I just wanted to come back today, you know, I was sore behind, but I said, I'm gonna fight this out. I gotta say thank you. I want the city council, manager, and all of you who supported me, and Castres, my grandson, told me to say hello to Mr. Cunningham and all of you. I appreciate everything you guys done. You voted yes, thank you. I appreciate you.
All right, thank you, Willie. Ken Scobell?
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I originally came here to talk a little bit, and I probably will, about Carmadell Soul last week and that controversial meeting, but I just sort of got a little bit more swept away with all the other things that are going on that, and just by coincidence, I'm here again, and this is the actual Constitution Day, and so we're all seeing a representative democracy and all the things that go on, and all the problems there are with this kind of thing of listening to things. And it just hits me again, and this is sort of the segue into the Carmadell Soul issue last week, how important trust is in this kind of representative democracy situation that we're still been trying for, what, 200-plus years now, 200-year? It is a difficult thing. And, and I just want to say that too often, Tucson is, because I know a lot about Tucson, Tucson has a wonderful social conscious, and then you get into real estate things, and it gets pretty rugged real quick. And I always think that's such a strange contrast, because you look at how much empathy from the social standpoint, then you get the real estate, and the knives come out and everything. So, and one of the first elements of trying to build some trust is when timing is really just apparently a question mark. You don't move forward in annexation and rezoning up at Campbell River Road north of St. Phil's Church and start the process on August 1st. Now, I know they did on that, but the first public meeting, you're not gonna build a lot of trust. It's good old time Tucson, let's make sure everybody's on vacation when we'll run something through. School boards do this. Having worked for school districts 30 years, it tends to be there also. So, when those things come forward like this, and then Fourth Avenue, Tucson is going through a, a approach of densification. Everybody wants to be backed down. We've had all this spread for 50 years going out, and now everyone wants to be back. And everybody wants to go up higher that has the money to build these kinds of things. And how much can you go up and not destroy the character of what everybody likes? And all you have to do, and I travel around the country and love to go to cities and historic places, you're at the tipping point right now. How much do you put forward to go up, and how much you're gonna put things in shadows and change the whole nature? I go to the Historical Society over at Second Street and Park, and I feel like I'm on Park Avenue when you look down the street and look at those. And it's a whole different world than what it was. So, I think we need to, and we'll just make this a Constitution Day close on this, how can you make sure that you're more open and communicative and building a trust, and tell a developer and the land use attorney, don't do something as high-profile as this in August. Work with the people on Fourth Avenue. I'm not in that, but I know Fourth Avenue 10 years from now may not be the place that we all enjoy now. Plenty of places in the country have done that. So let's just celebrate Constitution Day and revisit trust in our processes. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ken. All right, we've gone well over the time allocated for a call to the audience, and we still have a long night in front of us, so there were two cards left. And I'll, I'll give them to the clerk, and if you come next time, I will call you first up, just so for the record, it's Cara Visel and Jasmine Pierce, so that's, we'll go from there. Okay, let's move on to, we lost Councilmember Kazachik. Let's move on to Item 7.
Consent agenda items A through K.
Reports from the city manager on the consent agenda are received and have made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you're requested to read the consent agenda.
Your Honor, on this evening's consent agenda, item A is approval of minutes. Item B is Tucson Code Amendment, Chapter 7 and 11, relating to age restrictions for purchases of tobacco and nicotine delivery products and establishing a license enforcement program. This item has been continued due to discussion at the study session this afternoon. Item C is a resolution declaring support for the principle of health care as a basic human right. Item D is finance, approval of fiscal year 2019 involuntary tort judgments. Item E is a pre-annexation and development agreement with the Gray Family Trust, owner of parcel 114-19-006A for water service. Item F is an intergovernmental agreement with Arizona State University for the Choice Neighborhoods Planning Grant. Item G is a final plat, S19022, Rolling's Barrio lots 1 through 7. Item H is real property, vacation and sale of Alley Rightaway behind 1201 through 1215, East Broadway Boulevard, between Santa Rita Avenue and Mountain Avenue. Item I is an intergovernmental agreement with the Posco Yaki Tribe for provision of fixed route transit service for designated areas of Pima County. Item J is economic development, approval of modifications to the G plat lease incentive program. Item K is an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Tempe for housing-related financial services and consultation. That's the extent of the consent agenda, Your Honor.
May I have a motion, please?
Your Honor, I move that we pass A through J.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, let's go to roll call.
Your Honor, the motion would be to approve items A through K with the exception of B.
Got it.
Which was continued.
Got it. So we're gonna move, had the motion in second on that. Let's go to roll call.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mrs. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Kazachik?
Aye.
Ms. Romero?
Aye.
Mayor Ochoa?
Aye.
Mr. Durham?
Aye.
Mr. Finbres?
The items on contention are approved by a vote of 7-0. Let's move on to Item 8.
Public hearing, bingo license application, Calista Park, 4450, South Houghton Road, City Number 209, report from city manager, hearing.
City manager's communication number 309, dated September 17, is received and has made part of the record. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a time and place legally advertised for a public hearing on a request for a new bingo license at Calista Park, 4450, South Houghton. This public hearing is scheduled to last for no more than one hour. Speakers are limited to five-minute presentations. Please come forward when I call your name and make your presentation. State your name, address, whether or not you live in the city, whom you are representing, and whether or not you are a paid speaker. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to be heard on this item? Do we have a card or no?
No, Your Honor.
All right.
Your Honor, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? The public hearing is closed. Mr. Clerk, you're requested to read Resolution 23093 by number and title only.
Resolution Number 23093, relating to city clerk, approval of bingo license application for Calista Park.
What's the council's pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I move we pass and adopt Resolution 23093.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on this matter? Hearing none, let's go to roll call.
Mrs. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Kazachik?
Aye.
Ms. Romero?
Aye.
Mr. Finbres?
Aye.
Mayor Ochoa?
Aye.
Mr. Durham?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Resolution 23093 passes by a vote of 7-0. Let's move to Item 9.
Public hearing, Mission Road, Sindel Place, Annexation District, report from city manager, hearing.
City manager's communication number 310, dated September 17, is received and has made part of the record. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a time and place legally advertised for a public hearing on the proposed annexation district located on South Mission Road between Irvington Place and Sindel Place. This public hearing is scheduled to last for no more than one hour. Speakers are limited to five-minute presentations. Please come forward when I call your name and make your presentation. State your name, whether or not you live in the city, whom you are representing, and whether or not you are a paid speaker. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to be heard on this matter? Do we have a card, Mr. Clerk?
No, Your Honor.
All right, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
A motion, second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? The public hearing is closed. What's the council's pleasure? Councilmember Romero?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move the Sindel Place Annexation District.
All right, we got a motion and a second on that item. Any further discussion there? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Let's move on to Item 10.
Public hearing, Lucky Levine 1 Annexation District, report from city manager, hearing.
City manager's communication number 311, dated September 17, is received and has made part of the record. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a time and place legally advertised for a public hearing on the proposed annexation district located on Southeast Colb Road, south of Valencia Road. This public hearing is scheduled to last for no more than one hour. Speakers are limited to five-minute presentations. You guys all have this memorized. By the time we do three or four more of these, please come forward when I call your name and make your presentation. State your name, whether or not you live in the city, whom you are representing, and whether or not you are a paid speaker. Is there, is there anyone else in the audience wishing to be heard on this item? Do you have any cards, Mr. Clerk?
No, Your Honor.
All right, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? The public hearing is closed. What's the council's pleasure here?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we proceed with the Lucky Levine 1 Annexation District.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on this matter?
Your Honor, is Mr. Levine here?
I don't believe so. Is Allen?
Oh, okay.
Yeah. What's that? He is. Oh, come on up for a second. Hey, Mike. I have a feeling Councilmember Cunningham would like to congratulate you on your joining us in the city.
Congratulations. No, actually, we hear all about Port Tucson and all the things that you've done for the city, for our region, really, and a lot of people don't really know all the things that go on with regard to international trade, distribution, all the things that have happened, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike, for being here tonight. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Let's move to Item 11.
Public hearing, Lucky Levine 2 Annexation District, report from city manager, hearing.
City manager's communication number 312, dated September 17, is received and has made part of the record. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a time and place legally advertised for a public hearing on the proposed annexation district located on Southeast Colb Road, south of Valencia Road. This public hearing is scheduled to last for no more than one hour. Speakers are limited to five-minute presentations. Please come forward when I call your name and make your presentation. Again, if you do happen to come forward, state your name, whether or not you live in the city, whom you are representing, and whether or not you are a paid speaker. Mr. Clerk, do we have any cards on this item?
No, Your Honor.
Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on this item? If not, may I have a motion?
Moving.
Second.
A motion, second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Public hearing is closed. What's the council's pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we proceed with the Lucky Levine 2 Annexation District.
Okay, we got a motion and a second there. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. This is a pretty, you know, some of the things we do, we do really quickly, and there's some of the more significant things we do, and people don't recognize it, and this, these acts, which seem ministerial at this point, is a really big step for the city of Tucson. Let's go to Item 12.
Public hearing, Lucky Levine 3 Annexation District, report from city manager, hearing.
City manager's communication number 313, dated September 17, is received and has made part of the record. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a time and place legally advertised for a public hearing on the proposed annexation district located on Southeast Colb Road, south of Valencia Road. I'm not gonna ask the person who knows the answer to come up and tell you why we have to do this three times, there actually is a reason. This public hearing is scheduled to last for no more than one hour. Speakers are limited to five-minute presentations. Please come forward when I call your name and make your presentation. It's the same matter, really, so who's ever here knows the drill. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to be heard on this matter? Mr. Clerk, do you have any cards?
No, Your Honor.
All right, if not, may I have a motion to close?
Moving.
Second.
I think I got a motion and a second there. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The public hearing is closed. What's the council's pleasure? Vice Mayor Scott.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we proceed with the Lucky Levine Three Annexation District, and we are very happy to have you in the city of Tucson. Thank you so much. Ward four rules.
Is that part of the, is that part of the motion you're seconding? All right. Okay. Any discussion?
Second, your honor.
I got it. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Your honor, I think we have discussion for Ward one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Romero?
I just want to say first and foremost, I love the, what we named it, Lucky Levine. I, just like the city, the mayor recently said, this is such a significant annexation to the city of Tucson. We are lucky at the city of Tucson to have a port in Landport that makes such a big difference for our economic development in the city. Besides us as a community being geographically in a, in a perfect space, 45 minutes away from, from Mexico, our number one trading partner in Arizona, and having the, in Landport inside the city of Tucson is very, very significant as we move forward for continued economic development strategies in the city. So Lucky Levine, Lucky Tucson, this is a good thing, and I'm very happy to support it.
Okay. Anyone else?
Your honor, I just want to let everyone in the room know that the city of Tucson just grew by 240 acres.
All right. With that, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Anyone, does it sound like anyone's opposed? Nope. All right, motion carries. All right, so we're now going to move on to the Benedictine Monastery matter. This has been scheduled for two public hearings. It was, well, we'll just, we're going to take item 14 first before item 13, so we'll just go in that order. Item 14.
Public hearing zoning C91907 Benedictine Monastery Historic Landmark O3 and R3 to HL, city manager's report, ordinance adoption, report from city manager, report from zoning examiner, ordinance number 11689.
City manager's communication number 315 dated September 17 is received into and made part of the record. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a time and place legally advertised for a public hearing on a request to rezone in approximately 51,501 square foot area from O3 and R3 to HL zoning. That's from office three and residential three to historic landmark zoning. The rezoning site is located 800 North Country Club Road. The zoning examiner and staff recommend approval of HL zoning. Is the applicant or representative present? I believe an applicant or representative is present. Can I see what cards we have? Is your client, first of all, state your name and position?
My name is Corky Poster. I'm an architect and planner with Poster, Murto McDonald, and speaking in behalf of Tucson Monastery LLC.
Okay, well, just one question so far. Are you agree, is your client agreeable to the proposed requirements?
My client is agreeable to the proposed requirements if it's in accordance with the PAD that follows. Those were a package put together, and if the HL is approved without the PAD being approved, I would suspect my client is not, that's not an acceptable.
And the reverse is also true. The reason I asked for these to be flipped is there's no reason doing the PAD if the HL doesn't move forward.
If, and, and I suppose that, well, let's just see how it plays out.
We will.
Okay. Okay, this public hearing is scheduled to last for no more than one hour. Speakers are limited to five-minute presentations. This time, please listen. Please come forward when I call your name and make your presentation. State your name, whether or not you live in the city, whom you are representing, and whether or not you are a paid speaker. We do have a number of cards here tonight. Well, that's what we need to.
Two for 13, fourteen, and the rest are for 13.
Okay, okay, so we've got two for both 13 and 14, and the rest are for 13. So we'll take the two who are here for 14, and I will start with Michael Becker. Is Michael here?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening, my name is Michael Becker. So I keep my comments brief on 14, and I'd like to speak again on 13. I'm here representing the Southern Arizona Chapter of the American Institute of Architects. I'm the president-elect, and so I'll be president in 2020. We just want to express our support for the project and for the HL designation. I think the work that Corky and Savannah and Ross have done on this project to preserve the monastery and create a project that can also enhance the area is to be commended. So, again, just want to express our support as an organization for the project.
And Michael, since you put in for both 13 and 14, I'm going to take that as your remarks for both, if that's okay? If you want to speak more to the other?
Sure, yeah, then I will speak more. So in regard to the PAD, again, speaking on behalf of the AIA, we represent about 200 design professionals in Southern Arizona. This is the kind of project that completely aligns with our values and our goals for Southern Arizona in terms of being a high-density, multimodal, transit-oriented development. It, you know, we really see that when we look at growth and development in Tucson, we have to get more dense to be more sustainable. I've also been working on the Sunshine Mile overlay, and I consistently hear public feedback that people want a bikeable, walkable community, and without residential density, that's not going to happen. So seeing infill projects like the monastery where we take an existing historic asset, we find a way to repurpose that and then also provide the residential density that's necessary is, like I said, exactly what our organization feels like we need to be doing. I also want to speak briefly, just as an individual, so I live at 23rd, or 3028 East Second Street, so I'm directly across the street from the monastery, One House Inn. So when I walk to my car in the morning, the first thing I see is the spire on the church. I followed the project very closely from the beginning into several public meetings. I have to say the design team has been very responsive to comments in terms of height and scale within the neighborhood. There was a particular public meeting where I questioned the parking garage at Second and Country Club, and I think Savannah and Corky directly responded to that and made that particular portion of the project much, much less impactful, which I appreciate that because I see it from my kitchen window every morning. So overall, I think, you know, again, this is the, really, we're really excited about the project and, and hope that it is supported by mayor and council.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Mike Anglin, who is also asked to speak on 14, and if you have time, if you can incorporate your other comments, if there are any.
Sure. Thank you, your honor, and members of the council staff, thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. I will keep my comments brief because really I can second everything that Michael just said. I, I guess to check the things off of your list, I have lived in the city of Tucson for almost 20 years, in the Miramonte neighborhood for more than 10 years. I'm not a paid, I wasn't asked to, to speak by anyone that's paying me today. I'm an architect here in town. I have been involved in the Miramonte Neighborhood Association basically since I moved into the, to the neighborhood. I'm a past board member, past chair of their land use committee. I served with Michael on the local AIA chapter, have been on the state board for AIA, and I'm also the chairperson for the City of Tucson Designer Board. So that's just a little background of me. I was also asked by the neighborhood to be a representative of Miramonte Neighborhood on the committee, the design review committee, that was working with the developer and the design team as this project developed. And I, I would like to, you know, express my strong support and echo what Michael said about how responsive they've been. I think that Corky at Savannah at PMM and the developer Ross have been exceptionally responsive and not only going through the motions of gathering information and the concerns of the, both our neighborhood and Sam Hughes, but really listening to them, trying to understand them and, and be responsive. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on this item? If not, can I?
Margot.
I didn't turn my card in. I'm Margot Garcia. I am a citizen of Tucson. I'm not a paid representative. I live in the next neighborhood over and just really want to support the historic landmark status and really would thank Steve for getting this started some time ago. As a person who goes back and forth along Country Club and really loves that building and loves that sense of that building as it casts its glow, its aura over the whole area, the thought that we might lose that was just almost more than many of us could bear. And so I really thank Ross and Corky for agreeing to this and moving forward, and especially to Steve for getting it started, and I support it wholeheartedly.
All right, thank you, Margot. All right, anyone else that wishes to be heard on this? Okay. If not, can I have a motion to close this public hearing? Got a motion, a second to close the public hearing on item 14. All those in favor of closing the public hearing say aye. Anyone opposed? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Clerk, you're requested to read ordinance 11689 by number and title only.
Ordinance number 11689 relating to zoning, amending zoning district boundaries in the area located at 800 North Country Club Road, approximately 771 feet south of Speedway Boulevard, in case C91907 Benedictine Monastery Historic Landmark O3 and R3 to HL and setting an effective date.
What's the council's pleasure?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. This has been a long and complex process with literally hundreds of people at some point engaged as a result of the significance of this building. The nuns placed the monastery on the National Register of Historic Places. That does not protect it from demolition. This rezoning to HL status does protect the, preserve the exterior in perpetuity until perpetuity. It should be noted that our material says there were two protests to the HL, but I read those two protests, and nobody filed a protest against preservation. What they were protesting was actually the, the pad. So the, the, there's unanimity in terms of wanting to preserve this historic building. I'm not going to go through the whole, the whole history of how we got to this place, but we'll make two, two points. Number one, the signage will be required to get approval from the Tucson Pima County Historic Commission, and any wall penetrations or the modifications to the exterior will as well. There's some discussion about a handrail up on the upper deck in the, in the rear that will not be visible to, to the public. They'll go through the regular process. And so with that, I would move that we approve the HL zoning in ordinance 11689.
Second. Hey, we got a motion, a second, and any other discussion on this matter?
One thing, your honor.
Okay.
As we make this NHL building, and the crazy thing is, is that I met so many people in the last few months that said, how is that not already NHL building? So, but the other thing, I, it just came to me as we were kind of going through this process right now. I think it's really special that for Tucson, this building's last prize of public service was one of the biggest community humanitarian, humanitarian projects we've ever had. So I just wanted to note that as we voted through, and that's it.
No, no, well, point very well taken. Anybody else? Councilmember Romero?
Yeah, I'd like to echo what my colleague, Councilmember Cunningham, has said that what I usually like to bring up when it comes to protecting historic landmarks and historic buildings in Tucson is that it's not just the building we're protecting, but the traditions of what happened inside the building and what happened around the building. And so I just have to commend Ross and all of your team, including Corky, for really stepping up to the needs of this community with opening the Benedictine to the ethic that had always been followed in that building of compassion and love and assistance to those in need. And, and opening the Benedictine to Casa Alitas and Catholic Community Services to provide such an important service to human beings. And so I have to commend you for following that, the use and what that building means to the community with, with how you partnered it with help for the community, and that really, no matter everything else you do in the community, you're going straight to heaven for helping thousands of, of families and people. So I just wanted to commend you for that, and I'm really happy that we're, we're really taking a step towards the protection, the further protection of, of that building.
And if I'd known we had that authority, I would have definitely run again, you know? All right, any, any other discussion? All right, hearing none, let's go to roll call on this.
Mr. Durham.
Aye.
Mayor Rothschild.
Aye.
Mr. Phimbros.
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham.
Aye.
Ms. Romero.
Aye.
Mr. Kazachik.
Yeah, I'm not Catholic, but I'm not sure I'd take that as a get out of jail freak.
[laughing].
Mrs. Scott.
Aye.
All right. Ordinance 11689 passes by a vote of seven zero. Let's move back now to item 13.
Public hearing zoning C91906 Benedictine Monastery, PAD, Country Club Road, O3 and R3 to Pad 37, city manager's report, ordinance adoption, report from city manager, report from zoning examiner, hearing, ordinance number 11688. Your honor, on the material for this evening's meeting under item C, there was an error refers to RX1 to R1 zoning. It should read R, O3 and R3 to Pad 37.
Okay, well, I'm going to read what I have, and you correct me if I'm wrong. Okay, well, you'll let me know. All right, city manager's communication number 314 dated September 17 is received into and made part of the record. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a time and place legally advertised for a public hearing on a request to rezone approximately 6.89 acres from O3 to R3 to pad zoning. The rezoning site is located 800 North Country Club Road. The zoning examiner and staff recommend approval of pad zoning. If the, Mr. Poster, if you could come up again just to answer a question?
Mr. Mayor.
Is your client agreeable to the proposed requirements of the pad zoning?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I need for the time being. Thank you.
Thank you.
This public hearing is scheduled to last for no more than one hour. Speakers are limited to five-minute presentations. We do have a number of cards for this, and we should be able to get through all of them. So we didn't do it last time, but I, it's always curious to know your name, whether or not you live in the city, and if you are representing somebody, if you're a paid speaker. So let's start with Kylie Walzak.
I'll take the short mic. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, members of the public. I thought I only had three minutes, so I'm going to just go a little bit slower. My name is Kylie Walzak. I'm a resident of Ward One. I'm a mother, and I'm a transportation advocate, but I am not paid to be here tonight. We have a tremendous opportunity before us tonight that goes beyond just talking about the kind of city that we want to live in. We have a chance to jumpstart building it. We say we want to live in a walkable city with safe, comfortable streets that encourage and reward walking with interesting, creative, mixed-use buildings, parklets, traffic that has been calmed and managed well so that people who must drive can. We say we want, we want to encourage University of Arizona graduates and millennials to think about staying in Tucson, laying down roots here, contributing to the creative problem solving we'll need more of in the future. We say we value communities where our parents and grandparents can age in place and be located near family so we can all share in the priceless, multi-generational experiences that are often lacking from our modern American way of life. We say we value human dignity and quality of life and that we are all concerned about the high rates of pedestrian and motor vehicle related fatalities on our road. And with our new complete streets policy, which you all unanimously approved this year, we say we are ready to tackle the root causes of our misprioritized streets with bold vision[1703.62] we say we are ready to tackle the root causes of our misprioritized streets with bold vision and transformative street design guidelines. We have to do something about Country Club as part of this. But sometimes, but sometimes we are our own worst enemies, and we can often get in our own ways. Homeowners and residents in the neighborhoods around the Benedictine Monastery see themselves as stewards, caretakers of the homes and the places that they love. An Australian philosopher, Glenn Albrecht, coined a term, soul nostalgia, the psychological pain created by environmental destruction, and he extends this feeling to people trying to maintain their connections to life and things, often by opposing projects like this one. In other words, change is hard. I went back in preparation for this public hearing and listened to the presentation by Gil Penylosa when he visited Tucson in 2018, when he came to talk to us about complete streets and thriving communities. And there were so many great pieces of advice that he had for us then that seemed relevant to this project. Gil Penylosa reminded all of us to be guardian angels for the gentle minority, children, the elderly, people working too many jobs to have the privilege to speak to you, before you tonight, people fearful of coming out in public. I don't pretend to speak on behalf of all these people, rather, I'm reminding us all to keep them in mind and to think about the kind of city that will be fair and equitable for them. Second, are we focusing on the general interest over the particular interest? We are discussing a project in one of the most desired parts of town, where many people chose to set down their roots and raise their family 30 to 40 years ago at a time when real median incomes were greater than they are today and when home prices were much lower. The same amenities that drew families to this part of town then, walkability, access to parks, great schools, access to job markets ought to be available to a broader population today, especially if we all agree we want to curb car dependency, breathe clean air, and reclaim our streets and public spaces for people of all ages. Gil pointed out that it can be quite a shock to longtime residents to think about all of a sudden living next to multi-story buildings. However, he also pointed to Barcelona's superblocks as an example of really good density that gets it right. These are buildings that are capped at around five stories. They can do the most good in providing lots of affordable alternatives for people to, to live and to be located in the places where they want to be. Plan Tucson echoes this by stating, "Build dense infill where infrastructure, jobs, and amenities already exist, and preserve our cultural heritage with creative adaptive reuse." This project does that. Another thing Gil said was that when you say no to a project or a plan, you say yes to something else. The way we've built our city has had tremendous impacts and consequences, from forced displacement under the terms of urban renewal to commuter congestion and social isolation from sprawling suburban development. We can't solve problems by using the same kind of thinking we used when we created them. This is a chance to do things differently and to begin to build the city we say we all want. Thank you.
All right, thanks Kylie.
Good evening. My name is Michael Cahero. I live at 2740 East Sixth Street. I live near the monastery, and I, I think there's one issue that supersedes all the others, and that's climate, climate change, climate, global warming. And this project involves building a five-story, or four-story, or six-story parking tower to house the people inside the monastery. This monastery, by the way, is not going to be saved. Only the outside is saved. The inside's going to be filled with students, and the cars will be parked outside the building. So, what you're talking about is a situation where the footprint, the carbon footprint is going to be so great, and you know, we're at the tipping point. You've heard about that, the tipping point, when things get too warm and you get too many cars and too many automobiles. That's what's going on here. It's not the building, it's not the saving of the monastery that's important, though I, I do like the monastery. But it's, it's the parking tower, and you have a, a person who is putting in money from Florida, and you wonder, does this guy believe in climate change, or is he a denier? Mr. Berman, I believe his name is? What does he believe? Is he here to ask? Or, I wonder if Mr. Rolney or Mr. Poster, do they believe in climate change? Do you believe in climate change? Are you going to vote for this project and then have four or five big towers of automobiles to put in there, similar to the ones that are put over in The Mark? Have you seen The Mark over on Broadway? All those cars, isn't that wonderful? That's going to contribute to the death of our, of our system, of our planet. I mean, I, I can tell you all about it. You know, you could read Bill McKibben's ideas about it. And I know you're smiling, and you think, "Well, this guy's a nut." But we've only got about 10 years. You people want to build, allow this project to go forward? Ask the developers if they believe in climate change. That's what it's about. You, you have the, you have the knowledge in front of you to do something about this. We have 10 years, according to scientists. Unless you're a denier, you know, I want, that's why I wonder whether these, these developers are deniers, and these people, these architects, who talk about putting things together and saving the environment, they're not saving the environment, they're making it worse. The more tower, parking towers you build, the worse it gets. You're heating up the climate. Wasn't this the worst summer you've ever had in a long time? You think this was a, a nice, wet summer that you enjoyed? This was the worst I've ever been to, and I've, I've lived here all my life. This is the worst. It's getting worse here. What's wrong with you people? Wake up! Don't approve of this stuff. Five towers or four towers is too much. These towers are not going to solve the problem. The only thing you want, you need to do is to build parking towers, and that's going to make it worse. The heating up of the planet is going to get worse and worse. Ask the developers whether or not they believe in climate change. Ask yourself whether you believe in climate change.
All right, Charlie Bowles? Is Charlie here?
Honorable Mayor Rothschild and each member of the city council and staff, and I think I'm standing in front of people, most, most of you, I, I know. I'm here, I, I've lived in or around the city of Tucson for 40 years. I'm here voluntarily to support this project. I've followed it from the beginning. It's a very sensitive Tucson landmark change. I'm just listening to you on item 14, I can tell that you've encountered the gentleman, Mr. Ross Rolney, as I have. I worked with him on another very challenging project in our community, and during that time, I discovered that he is a man of integrity, character, and he keeps his word. If he tells you something, that's what he's going to do, and he does it. And so, for that, that's a big part of the reason that I support this project, but underlying that is the fact that the design and the plan is one that has been worked on very carefully and sensitively, and come to a very good place. And for that reason, I support it, and I ask you to support it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
I'm a resident of Tucson, and I represent No人在. I do represent in my heart Our Lady of Guadalupe, and boy, I'm a wordsmith, and I think we've got just a group of New Yorker magazine wordsmiths. Got it? I think you called it ethic, Regina? That was for a Roman Catholic perpetual adoration, 80-year-old edifice. I'm here trembling for all of this. What we're missing is a fat cat and cigar smoke. I don't know what hoodwinking scold duggerie. I'm witnessing here words like compassion, ethical. Right now, that property is as green as it's going to be. Right now, it, it would stand the test of the Green New Deal, this young girl was mentioning, and I'm sure a lot of you are wonderfully virtue signaling in your respective words about how wonderful you're going to protect the event. Right now, the thing stands the way it ought to stand. You guys, the curse of King Tut, whoever digs, you guys have not even started digging yet. I worked for TJ Bednar Homes, and I was making money hand over fist. I left nursing for it. We were printing money. Oh my God, we couldn't get enough cement to go and go and go and go. And D.R. Horton posted a quarter loss, and I gulped listening to Marketplace on NPR. I said, "We're next. We're a small builder." And sure enough, it took a while, and you know what? I've guilt, guilt of all that worthlessness. I hope you named the project Roman vomitorium. Fatuous, superfluous, absolute manufactured consumerism, absolutely unnecessary. Student loans are going to pay for these things, and the thing is just going to be ugly, ugly for construction. Anyhow, chroma going up, that's a dirty secret. I have no idea why this thing is being, the, the, what? God damn, euphemisms. Oh my goodness gracious, I've heard of, "We enjoy the input. Oh, the communication's so swell. We just meet and have meetings about the next meeting." You guys are drawing pictures. I might as well take my hand like this and say, "This is what the monastery is going to look like." Yeah, until the digs go in there, until the shovels start and the belching of every, I've been on sites, and when you neighbors that are there that love the idea, you're going to hear, "Mm, eh 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 eh, mm, eh 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 eh," and the gallows are going to go up, and you people are trifling with the holy ground. Now, you're going to tell me, Jeff, you know, we had the bishop out there, and he decommissioned a perpetual adoration? That place has value, not because it's pretty, because the Lord God and Our Lady of Guadalupe was, was worshiped there in perpetual adoration. You guys are, you have such an un-understanding of Roman Catholicism. If you practiced, you ought to be ashamed. I cannot believe the fun you're all having in this love fest for some obscene-looking thing that you're not even going to make it look congruent. You perfectly, you use the word repurpose, compartmental module, transport, you got a bicycle boulevard you're going to wreck, wreck. 500 vehicles are going to be there on top of whatever chrome is going to load up. Unbelievable. I, you know, I wrote a lot of notes today, and oh, I went to, I checked out your permits, yeah, you're not there yet, checked out, you're going to do about a million in impact fees, so Ruth Baker, you're not going to see a penny of that. That goes into a general fund, that you guys are going to figure out how to cut it together, filthy lucre. My goodness, you have no idea what you're attempting. The curse of King Tut. Honest to God, you're trifling with a holy place. Somebody's got to tell you. I'm watching it happen, and I'm like, "Wow, these guys are," you even called it an ethical place. Wonderful. Wow. I've, you know, you, you know, you probably would build the bar next to it. Why don't you get the drunk chicken guy back? Yeah, you put it up 60 feet next to it while you're at it. Unbelievable. And it's green right now, the Albedo, the Heat Island, and the Verga that's going to run around that place, let alone the two years of construction. Oh my God, and when you bust your pipelines and you do other thing, man, oh man, oh man. I, I'd say an embarrassment at how glossed over this is. It's going to be a train wreck for nothing. There are so many places that could be domiciled right now. You're building superfluous nothing to destroy the environment, put up some ob, obscene, what is that called, an investment? You guys are short markets or some scold duggerie. I just can't believe, unethical compassionate? Don't build it. Show you're ethical. God sakes.
Good evening, Carrie Silvan, 5983 East Grant Road. I am not here representing anybody as, in my official capacity, as a land use attorney. I am, I think the first speaker said this best, change is hard, and it takes a lot of work, and while I haven't been professionally involved in this, I know everybody who has worked on this project, and I'm here to give my compliments to all the parties. There's a lot of negotiation, a lot of back and forth. I think the end project is great. My comments were going to be related to Plan Tucson. The first speaker did a great job of walking through all of the policies that are critically important to our future, and to, to infill, and really creating a community that we want to live in that's transit-oriented. So, I give compliments to everybody and to Councilmember Steve Kay, who I know worked hard to bring the parties together and get this to this point. So, compliments to all, and I'm very, very supportive of the project.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The name is Halsey with an H. Hard to read sometimes. Good evening, city manager, your staff. Good evening, mayor and council, honorable members and dedicators of our city of Tucson. My name is Halsey Taylor. I am a resident for more than 25 years of Tucson. I listen carefully to all of the people who have a stake in what happens to 800 North Country Club Road. The stakeholders that I invited to be here, some of which I thank so much. The Arizona Historical Society is represented here. The Knights of Columbus are represented here. These are men who spent decades assisting the OSB community. We all have vested interest in Tucson developing and becoming a better and more livable city. We also have vested interest in protecting the historic treasures that we have here. Not so long ago, we were just a territory, and these pieces of architecture, these cultural treasures deserve to be recognized in such a way where we don't give up one thing for another, that there is a solution that can accommodate both. I'm here to speak to a rezoning that would allow the interior of the monastery to be used for commercial purposes, and that is what I object to. I am very glad and very thankful that historic landmark designation has been accomplished. I am very glad that that exquisite structure that was built by Tussanans is going to continue. What I am not glad about is that that magnificent sanctuary become a commercial interest when it could be so easily continued to be purpose, not repurposed, but continue its purpose as a community, facility, and venue, or upliftment. It would, it would be a sad day, a very sad day, ladies and gentlemen, if that sanctuary was to become a commercial boutique, Starbucks, high-end restaurant, shopping. I please ask you to consider that this rezoning, if it is something that needs to go through, that it prevent the commercialization of that sanctuary, and I thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, council and guests and TV Channel 12 viewers, all Tussanans. I didn't plan to, plan to be here on this issue. It came to me that what Mike and Jeff are talking about, what the people against it are talking about, is an application of what Elizabeth Warren said last week, when she said that in the next few years, we've got to cut back on the cars, we've got to cut down on the building, we've got to cut down on the energy sources to make them green. I was myself wondering, what does building mean? What does cutting back building mean? What is the, she's meaning the construction of buildings in a way that is not using 21st century tools to keep the ecology of the world going. We're talking about planning, as you said, it's been a long day for you, more than me probably, I forget whether it was in the planning session or in this general meeting, you were saying how by so many years, we're planning, that council's planning, Tucson's planning on being a green city, on being completely in line with what we want, ecology of an environment that will perpetuate all future generations. And it came to me that, from what has been said earlier, that this is an application of what Elizabeth Warren said, and that we do have to rethink what building techniques we're using, and maybe we're using 20th century designs still, we're not using what we can do. Just a thought. Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor, thank you. Ruth Beaker?
Ruth Beaker, speaking for myself, always unpaid. I find this project to be so much better than most infill developments being built out around the city, both in design and use. I appreciate that Ross and Corky partnered in recognition of the historic significance of the site and designed a project compatible to it. However, I regret that Miramonte Neighborhood did not have a more significant role throughout the two-year process. Here are three examples where I believe improved city policy could have served us better. The number one is what you grappled with for a long time this afternoon, and that's Climate Action Plan. The city requires no remediation of the Heat Island created by a residential infill's development's extensive lot use coverage. This project is eliminating five acres of treasured open space and vegetation. When mature vegetation is destroyed during construction or utility line replacements, should the responsible party not balance it with new plantings, either onsite or nearby offsite? In our case, Miramonte Neighborhood needs shade trees and shrubs for its Camino Miramonte Complete Streets project. Compensatory plantings there would give some balance to the development's negative heat impact on our immediate area. Number two, Planning Commission wants details of a project prior to approving a plan amendment. However, when using a PAD rezoning, its design process comes later to be evaluated by the zoning examiner. This project illustrated how badly the city needs to clarify its separate roles for commissioners and the zoning examiner. You have initiated action for a new ordinance to allow a concurrent plan amendment and rezoning process. Too late for us. Miramonte's opportunity to have input into a PAD basic design option was preempted by the Planning Commission. And third, the role of area and neighborhood plans in city land use decision-making has become even less clear. Tucson's Unified Development Code 3.5.5 states that a PAD must be in compliance with city plans. On November 21st, 2017, five of you voted to redefine compliance by bypassing the Houghton East Neighborhood Content Plan, declaring its specifics needed only be in basic harmony. Mike Rankin, are you listening? Nevertheless, on December 18th, 2018, you all voted to amend the Miramonte Neighborhood Plan with very specific regulations for this project. The new content was written by the developer and the staff without any overt neighborhood input or agreement that I am aware of. From my perspective, you put regulatory language into a type of document that you judged to be non-regulatory just a year earlier. Now I see that the zoning examiner finds this PAD to be in basic harmony. What exactly does that mean? Does the PAD comply with neighborhood, our Miramonte neighborhood plan, or just, does it just come close? Please initiate an in-depth discussion with residents to bring clarity to the role of neighborhood plans in city land use decision-making after the new council convenes in December. Were the city to address these development issues, heat abatement measurement, and plan amendment procedures and criteria for PADs, Miramonte Neighborhood's experience will at least provide benefits to others in the community long after the Benedictine Project is built out. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth. All right. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to be heard on this item? If not, have a motion to close the public hearing. A motion, second, to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Somebody have a handle? She did. Arlene, you wanna come up again?
I do.
Okay.
I had no idea this was on the agenda. I had no idea this was on the agenda. And this built, I'm Tucson-raised, my family came, brought me here when I was fourteen months old, so this is, this is my space. The monastery, I think I have a question to start with. How many people here have been inside that monastery when it was a monastery? Okay. Okay. That's why you speak as you speak. I had the privilege of being in the monastery. I've had the privilege of going and listening to vespers. I've watched that building my whole life, all of it. And it does, a building, it gathers the energy of those that enter it and what they do there, and that is a sacred building. There's no way I can see it any other way. And that sacredness of that building has shined forth on all of us for, well, for my whole life and before it. The building's older than I am. Mr. Rolney? I don't know which review is Mr. Rolney. Mr. Rolney, hi. I wanna honor you. When you turn that over as a place for the asylum seekers, it absolutely filled my heart and that is the building. I know you bought it not for that purpose. You bought it to make money, right? But what you did with that building reverberated for the whole community. We all felt proud of what you did. I, I went inside the building, they had a choir there, so I went wandering around to all the different rooms, which I never could do when it was busy being a monastery. And the rooms themselves are amazing. They're these big rooms, they're like, all I could see were like school rooms and education rooms and something for the, for all people to gather that energy. And that's what I'm speaking of. It's not, I mean, I appreciate the homework that everyone's done as far as the law and the city and the PAD, but there's that other level that lives in this building and I think we cannot ignore it in your decision-making process, that it needs to be honored and protected. There's not many buildings on the planet like this one. Thank you.
All right. Okay, we've had a motion and second to close, sorry, we've had a motion and second to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Kazatchek, what's the council's pleasure?
So the vast majority of the people who've weighed in on this project since the beginning, if they had their preference, would wanna see the entire six acres remain as it presently is. Had people, some of whom have spoken here tonight, said, just kill the project, just stop it. Reality check, the nuns sold the property. There are existing legal entitlements to the land based on how it's zoned. One of the speakers mentioned the Mark. The Mark was built according to the underlying zone and the entitlements on the land. The city cannot compel the owner to waive the development rights and leave it untouched. We cannot compel the owner to leave it untouched. Realizing that, we've gone through a long and exhaustive negotiation and public process. Began rough today as a very different relationship. And I credit all sides for working together to get us here. That's Ross, that's Corky, that's the neighbors, that's the Design Advisory Committee, its staff. It's been a very collaborative spirit. While we were going through that whole process, as a few of the speakers mentioned, we processed about 12,000 asylum seekers through the place. And so thank you, Ross, and Lisa, and Catholic Community Services, and the 400 or 500 volunteers who served in that place. While that was happening, staff was working iteratively with the design team. The design team was meeting with the neighbors. And what began as an eighty-six-foot-tall, out-of-scale project has been dialed back to one that the majority of those involved feel is more in tune with both the monastery and the surrounding area. The project continues to go through its evolution. The design is not finished, and as recently as I believe it was last week, the design team met with the Design Advisory Committee and showed some updates. So where are we today? We are preserving the Benedictine. There will be a public use to the monastery, yet to be decided. Landscaping on the property is being grafted and transplanted out to Mission Gardens right now. That has been a process that's been going on for several months. It will not be student housing. There will be the same number of new construction units as is allowed under the existing zoning, 255. The heights will step down from 55 to 44 to 35 feet. The highest point is only 11 feet taller than what would be allowed under the existing zoning. There will be a mix of uses on the site. The specific locations for those uses is not fixed yet. As I said, the design is evolving. The signage will follow all the city's sign code requirements. The lighting will be dark sky compliant. There will be no auto or pedestrian ingress or egress to the east into Miramonte Neighborhood. And they've already bought and demolished an abandoned house to the north to make room for all onsite parking. As a separate item to Ruth, to one of your comments, at a different time, I'll be bringing back a request to start a, to start the process for doing some cleanup work on the Miramonte Neighborhood Plan. I won't go back through all of the history, but I will simply say that at the time the neighborhood plan process was being discussed, there was a significant lack of, lack of trust on both sides. And both sides demanded that we, that we add a significant level of specificity to that neighborhood plan or that wouldn't have moved forward. And you might've wound up with student housing. The sensitivity of this project to literally an international set of eyes became evident from the very first public presentation. There have been many people, many of whom are here working tonight, who've been working together to get us to this point. The design will continue to evolve, but tonight's the time to approve the PAD and move this development along. There will be impacts to the area, the surrounding area, as a result of the project. And the question that I have for city staff, for Mr. Ortega, perhaps Mr. Rankin, is to identify what is the process going forward for identifying those specific impacts and the use of project impact fees to fund, say, the sidewalk along Second Street or some of the very specific amenities that this project is gonna cause to be necessary in that immediate area?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Kazatchek, the impact fee plan, the IIP, is where those projects can be identified or should be identified. However, as a part of the rezoning for this project, if you designate a specific area for improvement, then we can look at that as a part of that. However, the impact fee dollars specific to this project are part of the IIP. However, again, the rezoning requirements, if you designate certain improvements that are necessary, we can have that conversation as a part of this effort.
Well, see, that's, that's the vagueness of the impact fee, whole impact fee process. The, the, the mantra is always that, that impact fees are to pay for the impact of a particular project in a particular area. That is, in fact, not what happens with impact fees, and that's one of the reasons we have gotta continue this conversation and check that final box about saying, look, we gotta have much more flexibility within that whole process so that when we have a monastery, when we have a chroma, when we have a Speedway Campbell, when we have the towers over on Tyndale and Speedway, that the impacts that those projects generate on that immediate area are eligible for the fees that are paid by that developer at that time. That's, that's not what we have now, and that's, that makes almost a lie out of the whole notion of impact fees. So that conversation has to happen. I'm not gonna sit here tonight and play the game of Tullistis to Limit in terms of what specific projects are gonna be necessary for this neighborhood. But we, we have got to make a part of this understanding tonight that there will be impacts and that the fees that are being paid by this project have got to be allocated to help mitigate some of those costs.
Well, I mean, I'll add that I know-
And Mike was about this.
Yeah. Either one of you, Rankin?
I just can follow up on what the manager's already said, and you have the opportunity for identifying those types of expenditures of the impact fees in the IIP, excuse me. And the IIP is meant to be a living document that, once you make the decision in this round in establishing the projects and the IIP, that doesn't mean those are locked in for ten years. You can make annual or even more frequent amendments to the IIP as specific necessary public services become apparent based on new development.
Then is it my understanding that going forward tonight, if the council approves this PAD, that that is a fluid conversation and as impacts are identified for the surrounding area, that the impact fees generated by this project can be allocated to those, those needs?
Not, the PAD conversation isn't fluid after tonight, but the IIP and development and any future amendments of the IIP remain a fluid or living process that the council can-
So impact fees generated by this project can be allocated to the impacts that this project creates? Yes.
Yes. I mean, it's more complicated than that, but I know what you're getting at. Yes.
Well, so, so as I understand it, hopefully before the end of the year, we're gonna face up to renewing, amending, changing the way we do the, doing the impact fees. And one of the things that's been made clear to me is that, contrary to what happened in the past, that, and it'll take a vigilant council, but you guys look pretty vigilant to me, that on an annual basis, you can come back because the problem, the clumsiness is the statute, right?
So I get all that, and I know where you're going, but by the time we make those changes, this will be in the past.
Mr. Mayor? But not those impacts, not those, not those different impacts that you need to-
Mr. Mayor, maybe I can help us go here. So the, keep in mind that the IIP conversation, that the, the impact fee conversation will happen by the end of the calendar year. That's a timing thing that, it's a separate track, has nothing to do with this. However, what it will do is provide us with the opportunity to develop the flexibility which is necessary in the IIP in order for Councilmember Kazatchek's thoughts about the specific impact fees going to a specific improvement that's related to the impacts of this development.
Okay.
So that's, what I'm saying to you is the timing will work well for the impact fee update, the plan update for this project.
Okay. So there are lots of sets of years, so that we don't hear in December, that wasn't one of the listed projects. So with that, I would move that we adopt the PAD as recommended.
Second. Okay, we got a motion and a second. Councilmember Cunningham, do you want to add anything?
Well, I wanna be in the discussion phase. I thought, I felt from a procedural standpoint, that IPP discussion belonged in the discussion part after the second, but that's neither here nor there now.
Still discussing.
The second part I wanna say about the impact fee is that it's a very long, ongoing conversation, every project we vote on with impact fees. We have some very limited use of impact fees, partially because of the state, where we, whether we put it into a road, first of all, it has to be separated into roads, public safety, and parks, and then even then, it's not fluid. And the crazy thing is, and I know this sounds like a little bit out there, but the bottom line with impact fees is that we want specificity, but we want flexibility at the same time. And I know that's very counterintuitive to each other, but that's actually what you want with impact fees because without that flexibility, you don't know what you're gonna need in seven, eight years. So you can try to draw up a plan, and then eight years later, waiting pools aren't even used anymore. You need splash pads instead. And so all of a sudden, you roll out your plan for impact fees and the 1970s called and they want their plans back and you're going, wait a minute, that's not even what we want now. So that's kind of the thing with impact fees. We're having that discussion as a council, and I know that's not, this isn't, we're probably veering off the listed agenda, but I'll just say that that conversation's evolving. These guys are still in design. By the time you collect the impact fees, hopefully that conversation will be done.
We've got a motion and a second, any other discussion on this matter? If not, let's go to- If not, let's go to roll call.
Mr. Kazachek?
Yes.
Ms. Romero?
Yes.
Mayor Rothschild?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mrs. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Fimbres?
Aye.
Mr. Durham?
Aye.
Ordnance 116, I'm sorry, Ordnance 11688 passes by a vote of 7-0. Let's move to item 15.
Economic Development: Approval of Primary Jobs In Cine Development Agreement With Tucson Micro Hospital LLC. Report From City Manager, Resolution Number 23096.
City Manager, Communication Number 316, dated September 17, is received and to have made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you requested to read Resolution 23096 by number and title only.
Resolution Number 23096 relating to economic development incentives, authorizing and approving the primary jobs incentive development agreement between the City of Tucson and Tucson Micro Hospital LLC, a Delaware limited liability company, for development of a single-story acute care facility located at 7401 South Wilmont Road.
Ward four. What's the council's pleasure?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move we pass and adopt Resolution 23096. And I'm very happy that we have a hospital in the area. Ward four has been very, has been ignored. And to have hospital facilities at this level is amazing and very helpful and welcome.
Okay. Any other discussion on this matter?
Congratulations on getting the hospital, Shirley. I know you've been working on it a long time.
Anything else? Let's go to roll call.
Mrs. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Kazachek?
Aye.
Ms. Romero?
Aye.
Mr. Fimbres?
Aye.
Mayor Rothschild?
Aye.
Mr. Durham?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
We got him in. He was ahead of you. Resolution 23096 passes by a vote of 7-0. Let's go to item 16.
Economic Development: Approval of Primary Jobs In Cine Development Agreement With Texas Instruments. Report From City Manager, Resolution Number 23097.
City Manager, Communication Number 317, dated September 17, is received and to have made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you requested to read Resolution 23097 by number and title only.
Resolution Number 23097 relating to economic development incentives, authorizing and approving the primary jobs incentive development agreement between the City of Tucson and Texas Instruments Incorporated, a Delaware corporation for expansion of their current activities in Tucson by constructing a new three-story building located at 301 South Williams Boulevard.
What is the council's pleasure, Councilmember Kazachek?
Mr. Mayor, the project will retain 313 jobs, about over 25 of them paying in excess of $145,000 a year. The benefits to the taxpayers far outweigh the incentive, and so I'd move that we adopt the IIP.
Okay. We got a motion in a second. Any other discussion on this matter?
This is a big win for Midtown. Congratulations, Steve.
Let's go to roll call.
Mayor Rothschild?
Aye.
Mr. Fimbres?
Aye.
Mrs. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Durham?
Aye.
Ms. Romero?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mr. Kazachek?
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Item 17.
Economic Development: Authorizing A G-Plat Lease Agreement For 213 North Fourth Avenue. Report From City Manager, Resolution Number 23095.
City Manager, Communication Number 318, dated September 17, is received and to have made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you requested to read Resolution 23095 by number and title only.
Resolution Number 23095 relating to economic development incentives and real property, authorizing and approving the government property lease excise tax lease agreement between the City of Tucson and Opus Development Company LLC for the development of a mixed-use project located at 213 North Fourth Avenue.
What is the council's pleasure, Councilmember Kazachek?
Mr. Mayor, this has been turned controversial. First of all, I'll agree that the developers have been very giving in terms of what they've offered already throughout the course of this project. They've made several concessions to the neighborhoods, too, in terms of parking and direct cash contributions. And yet, the conversations that I've had with both the neighbors and Tom began mid-last week to late last week, Tom being Tom Warren. And the neighbors reached out and said they were midstream in negotiating or having a conversation about a community benefits agreement. Wanted to confirm that with Tom. We called, and I spoke with him on Friday afternoon. I said, would you have any problem in our pushing this back until October the 10th? And Tom said, that'd be fine. And so on that basis, I committed to the neighbors that I would make every effort to push this back to October 10th. Now, we hear that that's going to perhaps place the project in jeopardy, but my position is that my credibility is on the line, and I'm going to stand by my word. And so I'm going to ask that we push this back to make the final determination on the G-Plat for partners until October 10th, because that's what I said I would do. And if you lose your word, you lose everything.
Okay. I would like, I'm sure there's going to be comment or questions from others, if Mr. Warren and Ms. Riggs would just come up and just be available for questions. I know I have one, but I want to let other council go first.
Your Honor, you want to go?
So anybody have any...
I can start. So I've spoken with both offline. Well, I didn't speak directly to Suzanne. I talked to DeeDee, but I don't know if that counts. For tonight, I'm hoping. And we both have, we have history, all of us do. And I can't think of three people that I know on a personal level that I can believe will deal in good faith. So the real question that we have here is, my spidey sense is telling me that if we don't somewhat commit to the G-Plat, we may lose everything. But the other part is, is that if we don't commit to a CBA process, then we aren't doing what we always say we're going to do, which is honor our Fourth Avenue community. So my question is tonight, is how do we do both? How do we get to a point where we pass some type of resolution that says, hey, money guys, in wherever you're coming from, Midwest or East Coast, West Coast, whatever it is, this G-Plat's going to happen, this is a Tucson thing, but also, at the same time, we do need to iron out a couple CBA pieces? And that's kind of what the resolution that I'm looking for tonight, because I don't, I think, first of all, this project goes back, like, I think, almost 20 months, 21 months? And so it's a little bit different than the Flycatcher one because they did a PAD in advance. So a lot of what you would have asked for on the CBA is already in the PAD. So that's like the first piece. So that whole process went through. But I also understand that when the Flycatcher thing happened, we kind of had a new group of people on Fourth Avenue whose voices weren't being heard. And that's why I reached out to you. I remember when we met in what used to be Chafens over there. And, you know. So, welcome back. That's right. Welcome diner. Okay. So anyway, what I'm seeing is, based on just, again, relationships that I have with all you, how do we get to that point where we can say to the money guys, look, this is not an Injeopardous thing, but at the same time, the people on Fourth Avenue are some of the best people we've got. They do the, they do the working and paying and living and dying in this town, and we've got to make sure that they're heard and they're understood. So that's how I, that's what I, what I want to say is, how do I get to that between you guys right now? How do we get to that when we leave tonight?
Let me, let me ask a question of each of you, and then maybe that'll help frame for the rest of them. I'm going to start with Mr. Warren. Tom, you sent, and I should have brought it with me, but you sent an email, I think, early this morning to mayor and all council outlining what was in the pad that had been negotiated with stakeholders. And I certainly remember that painful process.
Many of which are hidden in this room tonight.
Okay. Could you just refresh all of us as to what it is? Because then my next question to Shannon's going to be, okay, what else?
Right.
Okay. So let me first hear what...
I'd like to say one thing, if I may, Mr. Mayor. Steve's actually very correct in what he said. I said, yeah, I can't, I can't really, my exact words were, I can't really think that 23 days is going to make that much difference. And as you know, most of what I've done, not all, but most of what I've done, some has been Shirley's Ward, and then, excuse me, Councilmember Scott, and the other, and most all of it is in Councilmember Kazachek's ward. So, and been various, you know, we've gotten a lot of things done and accomplished together. But what he said was accurate, and I made a mistake, and I sent that in an email to Steve today.
And that's honorable. That's honorable. I appreciate that.
You bet. And I should have said, I don't really know. To me, the 23 days will probably still work. I was very confident we would get the G-Plat. And then I went back to Opus, and I found out that they have to have it because of the capital market and who they've been dealing with through this whole process. And they told them about the state law and 60 days and the waiting and all of that. And so, because they have an investment meeting, I guess, towards the end of this week, and they want to get going, so the time became of the essence. So I just want to put that out, that, and I made a mistake with Councilmember Kazachek. Thanks. Yes. In the process, really, the community benefits, as was previously mentioned, they were done in this PAD.
Just read them. I should have brought the thing, and I could have read them back to you, but just read them.
Sure. 32 parking spots at 24,500, it's $784,000. Traffic study was completed, has been completed, and it did include the union project also, Councilmember Kazachek's request, that was $16,000. Traffic mitigation, Iron Horse, Nahuuna, $35,000.
Okay, so hold on there, because, so when you say traffic mitigation, $35,000, is that going to be a $35,000 contribution back to the neighborhood for...
That's correct. Now, the first phase of that is, there's another traffic study, one year after the CFO. So the money then can be directed to what's needed, but if it's not needed, they still get the $35,000.
Got it. Okay.
Okay. Historic donation to the warehouse district, $25,000. So you total all of that, and it's $875,000.
Okay. All right. Shannon, and I know we heard it from Ms. Leaf earlier this evening about the need for parking. We all understand that issue. That's a difficult issue on Fourth Avenue in particular. And I do remember the 32 parking spaces, which are for community use, not for whoever's ever living there. And those are, as Mr. Warren pointed out, very, way more expensive than you'd think or anyone would ever think until they start doing this.
I'm aware.
And then, of course, the $35,000 for traffic mitigation, which may be used for something else if you don't need it, and then $25,000 to the historic warehouse. And I don't know who all was involved and not involved at the time. But, and one of the things that, and one of the things that has been curious to me is the CBAs, we do them every week. We just call them conditions of a pad or conditions of zoning, and that's been done here. So what else are you looking for?
Well, the difference between the conditions of the pad and a community benefits agreement is that the community benefits agreement is a legal contract that's signed with the coalition, the neighborhood, and it runs with the property, and it is, it doesn't involve the city in any way, except for that, maybe you need to help us...
But the conditions of zoning also run with the property and are legally mandated document.
So our worry is that there are things in the pad that we're not sure if they are specific enough as far as the local business, defining local businesses, what kind of rent controls would be placed on the commercial properties in order to make sure that the local businesses can afford to move in there. Those are things that were in our CBA with the union on Fourth, I mean, the union on Sixth, sorry. So those are the kind of, it's, we agree that they have already agreed to a lot of this stuff, but we would like it to also be commemorated in the CBA, and then there are other things that...
But Shannon, if you were to say to, and let me go, let me get Tom for just a second, because I want to, I do want to clarify...
And if I may, Mr. Mayor, also, I think Tom did not, did not talk about the reduction of retail square footage from 10,000 square feet to approximately 4,500 square feet to be divided into four spaces to encourage occupancy of small locally-owned businesses. So that's part also as well of...
Thank you. That was exactly my question, because we're not allowed by state law to do rent control, and I think you probably learned that in the last one. But what we can do, and apparently we have done, is we've said your spaces will be a certain size, and that should encourage local business, and so that's also already in there.
That's correct, and I did work that out with many of the stakeholders here tonight and also the merchants association, and that's what we did.
Okay.
And thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Go ahead.
I'm in the same position that Councilmember Cunningham is. I know the parties involved. I worked with Tom on other projects within the city, some in Ward One, some throughout the city. Also, Historic Fourth Avenue Coalition has been getting very active within the past two years and really working for the benefit of the entire community, the neighborhoods and Fourth Avenue. And so I guess what I'd like to see happen as well is make sure that we move forward with the G-Plat tonight and make sure that we also have, or we set ourselves, we set the developer and the Historic Fourth Avenue Coalition to work together to create a community benefits agreement. I know that the Historic Fourth Avenue Coalition wants to put in writing, you know, how will the residents participate with the merchants, what, you know, just kind of define a little bit more what the relationship into the future will be with residents and the managers of the, of the complex. And so I guess my question to you, Tom, is if we move that we approve the G-Plat, the process of the G-Plat tonight, can we also make sure that we attach a conversation within the next two, three weeks so that there are additional commitments with the Historic Fourth Avenue Coalition to work with the remaining concerns? And I don't think that there's going to be bigger demands, but much more of a relationship building and setting the, setting the tone of the relationship for the future.
I would have to refer to Brett Hopper, who spoke earlier, as, you know, because she's with Opus and actually retained by Opus, as you all know. I wouldn't see a problem, I would see, the only place I would see a problem, knowing the project and knowing the expense and what the project's about, that there might be a problem if it was the money demands. I think they've really, really stretched very far.
And Tom, what I...
But these other demands, you know, and you're asking for, Councilman Romero, I would have to ask Brett if, you know, they would, you know, be willing to entertain that.
Well, I think mayor and council received a letter from the Historic Fourth Avenue Coalition.
Yes.
And it says a couple of things. We want to make sure that this project is respectful of the folks who inhabit and do business on Fourth Avenue.
Mm-hmm.
That's one of the things that I read. The other one is, let's see, collaboration into the future and the relationship between the merchants, the managers of the new building, and the residents. And so, and then there's also questions about having communication with the developers when it comes to the construction, the time of construction, that that's all happening.
Yeah, like we do at the main gate.
So that is what I see in the, in the, in the, in the letter sent from the Historic Fourth Avenue Coalition to solidify, I would say, a community benefits agreement of sorts so that the relationship continues to be healthy and grows, not just right now, but in the face of construction and into the future of the development. Right now, what I see is that Opus has been very, very generous.
Yeah.
When it comes to what you've put out there in terms of community benefits already.
Right.
And so, $875,000... And so, $875,000 plus the addition of reducing that, that square footage and encouraging occupancy by small locally-owned merchants is very, very good. And I think that that's something that the Fourth, the Historic Fourth Avenue merchants would also want to make sure that it's part of, like, the community benefits agreement. So, I think we all want to move this forward, and for the, for the sake of making sure that, you know, the process is, is equally important.
So, Tom...
As we make, as we make, as we move forward, right? And I know that you have been, Tom, you have been part of this process for more than, what, you said?
Twenty-eight months.
Twenty-eight months. And so, I think that I do not want this Mayor and Council to send a signal that we are going to be disruptive in the process that we started some time ago. I just want to make sure that we move forward with the G-Plat, but at the same time, that there is a future commitment to come to a community benefits agreements of some sort with, with merchants.
So, Tom, for clarity's sake, and I, I think Councilmember Romero's actually drilled down pretty well on this one.
I do, too.
And you don't have to look to Mr. Hopper. You know, I still don't think there's a real understanding about, you know, the firmness of what we've already done. And so, but, but from these folks' point of view, you could put those things in a CBA, and that, and that gives them more confidence. They can record that document, too.
Yeah.
But, I think what Councilmember Romero was saying, which, and I'm prepared to move forward if I, and I appreciate that there's no, once we move forward, you know, the whole leverage issue. But, what, what I'm hearing her say, and I think is right, and I think actually may have happened on the property up the street, is that there's a conversation about how the merchants and the neighbors are going to be able to interact with the owner in the future, and that there be a continuing conversation so that, for instance, and we've had these issues, you know, I mean, you know, I, you know, it's easy to look back on the things you did wrong over eight years, you know, but, and still haunted a little bit by the towers over on, by the university, which, quite frankly, in my opinion, still needed to happen. But, should we have thought a little bit more about balconies? Should we have thought a little bit more about the fact that it was by a monastery? Should we, a monastery, a mosque? We've had plenty of church tonight.
The center for us.
Should we have, should we have thought a little bit more about that community's ability to help enforce if a problem occurred? And I think that's what these folks are looking for. I will tell you, there's no, even if we were to delay it three weeks, if you came back and said there wasn't an agreement, we're not in a different position. We're going to vote. Okay? But, I think in good faith, if you give us the commitment tonight, what Councilmember Romero's asking for, that you will sit with these folks and look for, and there may be an additional financial. I mean, you know, if there's $35,000 or $50,000, you know, but that's, I'm not picking numbers. I'm just saying, they may be something that would require a little more financial. But, it's your guys', you know, it's your guys' call. And, but, those non-financial agreements that could be in a CBA, I think, could be very important to the spirit of the whole project and to Fourth Avenue. So, that's kind of where I'm going to be.
Yeah, I agree.
Your Honor, I want to make, put a couple of things on the record. Number one is that the CBA probably needs to tighten up some of the language about local first. It's, that's one of the, like, I think that's kind of the central items that the coalition is for. The other thing is, is that I totally concede the fact that you've been totally generous with the, with the stakeholders. The problem was, was that this coalition was getting formed as a stakeholder while you were dealing with the other stakeholders. So, they kind of got left out of the rain a little bit. And so, I'd like to, I would highly recommend we modestly correct that error. That would be basically the spirit of where I'm going with that. I think those things, and how I know the people from the coalition, and just the whole experience I had, not just through the Flycatcher experience, but also through lifelong experience, I think that will go a long way. And I don't want to lose the project for the city. I actually think this is pretty neat, the idea of building up our downtown and high transit, transit-oriented growth. I mean, this is all the stuff out of a handbook that's supposed to work, but...
You and I have talked about the status of the site today.
So, right. So, I just want to be, I'm really tentative about this, because I basically said, "I thought we were going to delay." And so, I'm not really excited about moving forward unless we have this, but, well, I'm trying to just get a gauge of the room.
Let's get a motion from Councilmember Romero and see what we got.
I just want to make sure that Tom has the opportunity to say...
Thanks. Yeah, as far as communication, collaboration, and that type of thing, I think that, and I hope I'm not being hubris, but I think that's the reputation I have. Sometimes I get blamed for taking too long. I won't mention any names, and, but I, you know, do it pretty thorough, and I'm very exhaustive. And I think Councilman Kozaszek will back that up also, and Councilman Scott. So, that type of thing and communication with the Fourth Avenue merchants and with the people, with the folks, I would think...
This is the historic coalition. So, Tom, two things. One, this is not about your reputation for communication.
No, I know.
You know, you're...
But, I think it's a good idea.
You're going to do this project, and then you're, you know, you're going to go on to your next one.
Yeah.
Okay? I think what these folks would like to see in writing, and maybe we could have had in some other deals, is...
We can hear it on the record.
Regardless who is there, that they've got that communication.
Oh, I agree.
And that that will be something that will be...
That's where I was...
It will be a promise that we make.
Yeah. Well, that was, but I've got to make a promise that I would sit, I will sit down and, and do that, and work with the folks, you know, to make it happen with obviously Opus' direction, and that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
All righty. And so, I don't know, Mr. Hopper would like to add to that, but I do have a motion. But, I would like to hear from Mr. Hopper for a sec.
And I thank you for the opportunity. We most definitely, that's our reputation, that's what we do. We'll definitely sit down with the coalition.
Thank you.
And make sure, we want to be an integral part of this community.
Yes.
And that's what we've done in every place we've gone. We have a foundation that has invested $1.2 million in the, in the last five years in the Phoenix community, in communities where we do business. We intend to do the same thing here. So, we're...
Shannon, can you get that, Shannon, if you get that in writing for me, I'm really happy.
What did you say, 1.2 million or billion?
It doesn't have to be that number, but it would be nice, and I've always thought it's nice when you have a successful business in the community and they have a foundation. You know, give back something to the community, and if you can make...
And that's what we've done. We have a certain parameters in which the foundation gives back to the community, and I can assure you that we will do that here in Tucson as well, and we want to have open dialogue and communication. We will keep you apprised of every step of the way as we move forward with the project.
So, Mr. Mayor, hearing that, may I make a motion?
Yes.
Sure.
Sure, Shannon.
I'm sorry. I just want to, one more time. So, we are not debating that this company is a quality company and that this is a quality project. We do not want to kill the project. I do want to make it clear that the Historic Fourth Avenue Coalition is not the Fourth Avenue merchants.
Yeah.
It's not just the merchants. It's West University Neighborhood, it's Iron Horse Neighborhood, it's Pine Island Neighborhood, it's Dunbar Spring, and it's several stakeholders on the avenue in Local First, Arizona. It's a pretty big coalition. And so, and we were not formed when this PAD was, was done. And that's, that's beside the point in a sense, but I keep feeling like they're saying that we've already been included in, and we haven't, and as, as what we are now. Getting a CBA with a G-Plat is a precedent that is super important for us to set as the future of what's going to be happening on Fourth Avenue. Right now, as it is, all of our major intersections are going to have developments being built all at the same time. So, that's going to cause quite an impact on Fourth Avenue that I don't know is necessarily foreseeable. So, there will be things down the line that we're going to need maybe to be remedied. And it's not, the mitigation funds that were given to Iron Horse and Wuna and Warehouse District are not going to cover that. So, yes, if we could, some kind of monetary would be excellent. But, of course, our main goals are intellectual goals about localism, about, about working together as partnership, about keeping communication down the line. All of that is what's important to us. So, of course, in the CBA, that's what we're really going to focus on, and it's things that you can't put in a PAD necessarily. They're in there maybe, but...
Could be, but...
So, I think that we are, I don't know, I've got, like, I've got a lot of my...
You don't want to have...
... board here.
You don't, you don't want to have to look at Mr. Hopper either, do you?
For myself, it's hard to speak for just myself, but I do have my vice chair. I have three other board members, about four or five board members back here, so...
Councilmember Romero, if you have a motion.
Okay. So, if, so if I may, what I've heard on the record, and both Tom and Mr. Hopper said that they, that they are amenable to that, which is the possibility, and I think the mayor brought up, to any financial remedy. I think they threw out $35,000. I don't, I don't know that is something to be discussed. And then to tighten up the localism language. And so, what I'd like to do, since we heard that on the record, and I think we heard something about a foundation with $1.2 million or something, that's on the record as well. But, I'd like to move that we approve Resolution Number 23095 relating to an economic development incentive and real property, authorizing and approving that government property six-size tax lease agreement between the City of Tucson and Opus Development for the development of a mixed-use project located at 213 North Fourth Avenue, and that the developer continue to have conversations with the Historic Fourth Avenue Coalition and other stakeholders and community members, and to create a community benefits agreement.
Second.
Is there a second?
I'd just second.
Oh, thank you. And Tom, Mr. Hopper, I think the other thing I heard that is important to me, and it's not financial, but it's really important, is to set the parameters for future communications and, and future issues that may arise. And you don't always know what those are going to be. But, and I think what these folks on Fourth Avenue are really working hard to do, because there's going to be a transformation there, we did this IID or whatever it is, and they just want, since I've always gotten from them, is all they want to assure is, as that transformation goes through, that the new neighbors are people who are going to be willing to work with them to preserve the sense of Fourth Avenue. And, and so, I don't know that the language has to be real, you know, defined, but I think it has to be something that they can come back to and, and one day say to you guys, "Hey, you made this agreement, and, you know, you need to live by it." And, and so, anyway, anyway, I'm going to be in support of Councilmember Romero's motion. So, any other discussion? All right. Hearing none. Let's go to roll call, I guess.
Mr. Finbres?
Aye.
Mr. Durham?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mayor Rothschild?
Aye.
Mr. Kozaszek?
Aye.
Ms. Romero?
Aye.
Mr. Kozaszek?
Aye.
Mrs. Scott?
Aye.
Resolution 23095 passes by a vote of 7-0. Item 19.
City Magistrates, Appointment of City Magistrates in Fixing Compensation, Report from City Manager, Ordinance Number 11685 and Ordinance Number 11686.
City Manager's Communication Number 321, dated September 17, is received into and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you are requested to read Resolution 23098 by number and title only.
Resolution Number 23098 relating to economic development incentives modifying the Primary Jobs Inc. Program.
What is the council's pleasure? Councilmember Durham?
I move we pass and adopt Resolution 23098.
Any discussion?
Mike, good job on this one.
Hearing none other. Let's go to roll call.
Mr. Durham?
Aye.
Mayor Rothschild?
Aye.
Mr. Finbres?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Ms. Romero?
Aye.
Mr. Kozaszek?
Aye.
Mrs. Scott?
Aye.
Resolution 23098 passes by a vote of 7-0. Item 19.
City Magistrates, Appointment of City Magistrates in Fixing Compensation, Report from City Manager, Ordinance Number 11685 and Ordinance Number 11686.
City Manager's Communication Number 321, dated September 17, is received into and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you are requested to read Ordinance 11685 by number and title only.
Ordinance Number 11685 relating to City Magistrates, Appointing TJ Cranshaw as City Magistrate of the City of Tucson, fixing compensation and declaring an emergency.
What is the council's pleasure?
Your Honor, I welcome Judge Cranshaw. I move that we pass and adopt 011685.
Motion second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say, ah, it's a roll call.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mrs. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Kozaszek?
Aye.
Ms. Romero?
Aye.
Mr. Durham?
Aye.
Mrs. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Finbres?
Aye.
Ordinance 11685 passes by a vote of 7-0. Item 20.
Adjournment?
Next, council stand adjourned. Next regularly scheduled meeting will be on Thursday, October 10, 5:30, right here.